More from the eastern Oak Manor side of town in addition to the Frank Zeke area. Part of our boundary actually goes towards Empire Drive, so that whole Frank Zeke area is technically part of our boundary. So we have a bus that picks up there, but there would also be an additional bus, as I said. And Dave, I'm not sure if you want to add to that.
Yeah.
Dave's come up to him.
Okay. Good evening, trustees and superintendent. Yes, we looked at adding an additional route starting at Grace Hudson and basically working its way north. We already have an existing bus route that starts at Frank Zeke that services Eagle Peak Middle School. So instead of adding another one in that case, we would just use what's existing because there is room currently on that bus. And depending on, you know, the amount of kids, I think that two buses would be more than adequate to provide transportation to and from the elementary schools, basically using them as hubs so parents or they could get there, and that's where we would go from. So it's the most economic way and honestly, the easiest way to get the job done.
And then I guess the follow-up question to that is we don't offer that same service to our D-LAC program at Grace Hudson. And that program seems to be very popular and parents shuttle their kids and being budget conscious, I'm wondering if that's something that this River Valley group has explored, not having a bus system. Even though it's important to the parents, and I bring my kids from the Hopland area every day, so I appreciate the drive, I'm wondering if that's something that has been thought about?
That was a question we specifically asked parents, and they said that they would need transportation. I mean, I think part of the issue is just how centrally located that it seems to be. You know, people are a little concerned about driving too far here. And so that's one of the reasons with Eagle Peak that the enrollment is not as high is it is not as centrally located in Ukiah. And so that's why we, you know, we were also, you know, budget conscious, and that's why we asked that question of parents. And consistently at all the schools heard that they would need that to make this work. And that was also in the prior Redwood Valley study, the RBCEO, there was also the feedback that to have students go to that area, there would need to be transportation provided.
I would just want us to vote on tonight without that particular detail finished, that it could go on for longer. And I don't know that we'd need to hold up a vote tonight for that.
The bus issue?
The bus issue, yeah.
Okay, trustee Van Zandt.
I think this school sounds fabulous. Well done. I'm excited about it. If I wasn't already committed to the D-LIP program, I would consider shuttling my kids out there. So I'm excited about it. It's really fun to see something happening in the Redwood Valley area that's had a lot of less exciting things happen. So I'm really happy about it. I think it's great. I am not 100% sold on the busing thing. I think it needs a little bit more conversation. I agree with Tyler. There's something that seems a little, we made it pretty clear, we don't bus to Grace Hudson if you're outside the attendance area. I could see a parent shuttling their kid to the Frank Zeke drop-off part, right? And then they could still get a ride out to the valley. But I think we could approve the concept as trustee Mulgar says, without totally nailing down that piece yet, would be my suggestion. But it sounds like a lot of fun. I'm excited for you all.
Trustee Monperry.
I guess I was surprised. I did not realize we were going to include 5th grade. And I'm wondering why we don't do 6th and 7th. And it's one of the, a lot of the concerns about parents about having their 5th graders there was that they wanted them to be kept in somewhat of an isolated area. And I just, it seems young to me, and I would much prefer that we go 6th, you know, the upper grades just before they get into the high school.
I think it's really an issue of the 7th grade. You have a very large class, so you are at full capacity. And that's really the reason to start and then build up from those grade levels because of the capacity that you have available at the site.
Do you have something to add to that?
I also just, can I just reaffirm, I wanted to reaffirm the point that I would have, we just, I assumed that music would certainly be a part of this. And I'm sure there's some way to look at some other school and make sure that that is included.
Yes, we're, I mean, and this is, this is, this opportunity is for students that really want to pursue STEM. And there's ways to pursue STEM and music. And, you know, the direction is very loud and clear, I think, to the entire schools, to have a robust music program and a STEM program. To answer your earlier question, we will be most full-throttle on 6th grade STEM and 5th grade to a lesser degree. But as an example, we have 90 5th graders. So next year, we have capacity for 120. So that is the grade we will specifically target for this program. And that's where there'll be a new elective opportunity for students that want to take a STEM wheel type of class. What we've also put into the plan is after 6th grade year, the students can really specialize into a pre-engineering pathway. And parents really wanted both. They wanted the wheel concept, but they also wanted specific type of electives where kids can have a very specific skill set. It's almost like taking a welding class, right? You could take maybe a shop wheel class and be exposed to all the different concepts. Ultimately, though, it becomes powerful to enter the job force when you have a specific skill set. So we're trying to do both. And at the younger grades, it would be more exploratory. And at 7th and 8th, it can specialize.
Thank you.
Trustee Nelson, do you have something else?
Maybe I, so I guess the question on rollout is, this year, the goal is for 5th and 6th, and subsequent years will be 7th. The 7th and 8th will naturally progress into it.
Right. So it may be that you would have some at 7th and 8th, but trying to focus on where you have space available to fill the school. So it's just sort of a, some years are flukes with you have a very large class, and that just happens to be the case in 7th grade. So the intent is really all the grade levels.
Are there any other board questions?
I guess I would just be curious how often we will hear how the planning process is going and how some of these questions are addressed. That was all that.
We have an action plan, and we would be happy to report whenever you'd like us to.
Yeah, I saw the actual.
Yeah, yeah. And it's continuing. We finished all of Phase 1. If approved, we started today in terms of planning on the implementation phase. So what?
I'm thinking, Dan and Dixon, maybe every other month, you give a short little blurb to me. I can put it in the Friday communication to the board. And then if there's anything that we need to bring back to the board for decision-making, we can bring that back. Unless you want it monthly.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I had a real quick question.
Okay.
Are you going to rename, are you going to call yourself something cool?
So we have talked about branding within the program, so we haven't thought about different slogans and so on, but I think that's part of it. I mean, we talked a little bit about, you know, the Eagle Peak Eagle will be holding a robot or something like that. So yes, branding and slogans are going to be part of it.
Any other questions from the trustees or comments? So we need to have a motion to proceed with this. And I would just like to say before you make a motion that you might want to consider some of the things that we've discussed.
I move approval, am I approving the plan? Am I approving the budget?
We're approving the Eagle Peak Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Magnet.
I move approval of the Science and Engineering Math Magnet, Science, Technology, and Engineering Math Magnet at Eagle Peak, with the exception of the busing portion of the program until further discussion.
Right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Everybody wants a second. It's exciting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm assuming there'll be no exceptions for the two-year-old.
All right, we will now go.
Thank you so much for your incredible work.
Yes. We will now go to D1, the elementary school capacity information. So you get to stay up there.
So I've asked Dixon to come back because there seemed to be just a little bit of confusion at our last board meeting about what our capacities were at our elementary schools. So this is really just a quick clarification on our elementary school capacities. And Dixon, take it away.
Okay, now we're, I was thinking, I'm not ready for the special education report that was showing up there. So, okay. I know, I'm still not ready for the flower either.
Oh, two seconds, because they're getting.
So at the last meeting, when we talked about capacity and information with Hopland, there was some questions that came up, and we said that we would revisit this. This year, there have been some changes in how facilities are used, and that has impacted some of your capacity information. So wanted to give you an update of kind of your new information based on current, this year, usage. Okay, so we are, here we are. Okay. So I know this from the last, no?
Yeah, it should work. Point it that way.
Okay. I'm trying. Okay, supposed to just be this button, and it was this off in this corner. Oh, no. Maybe you'd like to just do it from the screen there.
I think he's got the magic touch.
It's the texture.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this was the information that you wanted to look at, where we were relative to 450 students, because there's been discussion about having capacities for the elementary at 450. So that is the red line. So what we're seeing is that many of your schools are close to that 450 line. Couple of them are slightly over. So this is showing you your current enrollment, and this is your practical capacity based on the classrooms. So that there is some room, but not a lot of room available. This year, there were two more elementary students in the district, so you didn't have a lot of growth. But this is showing you also don't have a lot of capacity. But a point I wanted to make is that the adequacy of your schools is not just the number of classrooms. I mean, certainly you need classrooms, but you also need to have adequate acreage. So I think in looking at this, I would recommend on your facilities master plan that you would have some follow-up, and there's a slide. But the state recommends 9.6 acres for a 450-student school. Some of yours are over that, some of yours are under that. And that's going to impact how many students you'd want to place on a campus. They also recommend the square footage area per student. All of your elementary schools are actually over that. They need adequate core facilities. In the magnet study, some facilities were just so obvious, they stood out as being insufficient. But you would need in your facilities master plan, I think really to take a look at if those other core facilities, particularly your office area, the numbers of restrooms that you have on a site. You also need adequate ingress and egress so that you can have parents dropping kids off and buses. You have a number of older schools. It used to be that parents didn't drive their kids to school as much as they do now. So any older schools in California are heavily impacted, and you have a lot of older schools. So there are a number of sites where, just in terms of parents and buses getting in and out, that it's a concern. And so I'd recommend in your facilities master plan, you would consider that as well. So I just did kind of a quick run-through of your sites. So Frank Zeke is less than half of the acreage recommended by the site. There is no more space there. It's really too much enrollment for the land that you have. So I, this is, there's no more capacity there. You would not want to be adding students. If you look at Grace Hudson, because of the D-LIP model, you have to have students come in in kindergarten and then continue all the way through. So one classroom isn't really doing anything for you. So basically, you don't have enough room to add another grade level all the way through. So there's not any practical capacity that's available for students. So these two sites, you really can't be adding more students to them. So if we look at Calpella, it's 461 students. So the acreage is, it's just under what the state recommends for 450 students. So you're, it's close. The square footage is adequate. The core, in terms of core, the multipurpose room, the fire marshal lists how many students can be there for seating and assembly. It can seat 41% of the students for lunch, 88% for assemblies. So it's somewhat undersized. The ingress and egress, they have changed things there, trying to make it better. It is still really a problem. And that would limit how many students you'd want to have at that site. So there is a potential, if you move some programs around, that you could add some more classroom space. But you would need to be creating offices and classrooms. So all of the areas that we're saying you could use for classrooms, and if you were under a state program, they would require to use, there would be a cost to it, and you're also moving multiple programs. So if necessary, you could add, but it would, there would be a cost, and it may not be that desirable, particularly given the egress/ingress problems at the school site. For NACOMAS, the acreage is adequate. It's over the state recommendation for 450. Square footage per student's adequate. The multipurpose room, for some reason, it's unknown for seating. It's not listed on the chart, which it's supposed to be. It's 370 for assembly. The library is very inadequate. There's an office-library portables that are combined that are in very poor condition. They're small. They, I think you really need to evaluate if that really is a usable area. There's two, the ingress/egress is not good. And the potential classrooms, you could have two classrooms where you could be having students. But I think before you did that, you might want to consider if the portable used for the library and the staff room is really adequate, or if you need to move those into those two classrooms. So it's, you know, there is acreage, there is some classroom capacity, but I think you want to look at those two portables before you would do anything at that site. So for YOCAO, there was another class added at TK this year, so there's less capacity. The acreage is adequate. It's over what the state recommends. There's adequate core because it used to be a junior high, so there is a multipurpose room and with the adjacent gym. So you have, the cafeteria is small, but you've got a big gym next to it. So in that way, that the site could handle more students. The ingress/egress is problematic, and the parking and access is, was reported to really be a problem by the principal. And then, so a class was already added. You could convert one more room to classrooms, but it would involve moving multiple programs. And it would also mean that there would be a cost to convert a classroom to group area so that you would have walls so that people could work in those areas. So there would be an investment. This school has potential to expand, but you would want to address things like the library at this school as well, which is taking up classroom space because there's just not enough room for it otherwise. So the core is somewhat limited here. At Oak Manor, you've got 483 students. Your acreage is over the state standard. You have the multipurpose room. The seating is not listed on the chart. It's 350 for assembly. The ingress/egress, again, as an older school, is problematic. And you have two classrooms that could be available by changing how rooms are used. You would be moving some programs. One of them would be easier than the other one. And there, you had two portables that were in, basically not fit for students. One of them is becoming a special education classroom, and the other, you could still be putting a new portable on, and you could use it for classroom space. So there is some capacity, but there would be a conversion cost, either to buy a portable or to convert the classrooms. So kind of in summary, I would recommend that some of these questions and issues from the magnet study, that you address them further in the facilities master plan. And that you would maintain Hopland for another year, so you can complete the facilities master plan and see if you need that for your elementary capacity in future years. And then I think also look at what you want in terms of the elementary capacity. It's, I think that what this has shown is it's not a simple issue. It's not just a number. It's also looking at what's at that site, and what is the capacity for core ingress/egress, et cetera. And then I think also looking at some equity in facilities, that there are some schools like Frank Zeke where the things that they have done to house all those kids is pretty amazing. They, I was there when the principal was moving out of her office to provide more space for programs. So they are, you know, highly impacted. And you have others which, relative to that, they have more room. So I think that it, you know, looking at what some equity across sites would make sense. And then also maybe defining what an elementary school should have. So that if you say, this is a basic elementary facility, and then you look at that standard to determine what you want to be providing and what each school has so that you could look at equity in that way. And then the ingress/egress, which is a challenging one. So those are recommendations for consideration. I know that you're going to be working on a facilities master plan, and I think the two could dovetail nicely.
Trustee Nelson?
The 450 number, the very first or second slide, what is that?
Well, the, that was a number I think that has been talked about here in terms of an elementary standard. It may have been one at one time. My understanding is that you don't have an approved number at this point, but that's sort of the number that's been talked about as far as what would be a desirable size for an elementary school.
And in your experience, is, does it matter? Is 600 too many?
A lot, I mean, a lot of schools are 600. I think that the challenge that you have is that you have older sites that don't have the core facilities for 600. If you were to build the school now, you would probably design it for closer to 600 in terms of, you know, there's some cost efficiencies. But you have some real limitations, and it's not just classrooms. And that was really the point I wanted to make, is that, you know, if you're growing and you just can't fit kids, then you put them in in classrooms because you have to and you have no choice. We're not in that environment right now. It's not growing at the elementary level. It's been flat. So it's, and doing a facilities master plan, it's a time to look at what really is adequate, and then how do we fund that and basically put that vision in. But, you know, given what you have, it's hard to be too large.
And then the second question I have is the acreage, the state standard acreage, what is, what's the, what's that requirement?
They, and it's not a requirement. It's basically a guideline. So they, there are facilities manuals that they use primarily when you're building a new school. And so there are state standards about what's adequate for an elementary school. And so that's what the state is recommending, and that's the only one they're saying. So they're assuming a 450-student school, and they're saying 9.6 acres. So I think just to know, relative to the state standard, you don't have to use it. But I think it does tell you something about Frank Zeke. That's.
So potentially, and my experience is with my kids at YOCAO, there's a ginormous field that is nice for playing soccer on sometimes on the weekend. But the ingress/egress, I know for all the schools, is kind of a disaster. If we decided in the facilities master plan to upgrade ingress/egress, we could use that field without impacting that 9-point-something acres.
Well, and that's where, and I think you really kind of need to look at that engineering. It's just a problem, you know, with older schools. That's a huge problem. And, I mean, I saw that. I kept hearing it, site after site, just principals concerned for safety. And, you know, so certainly knew that would be an issue that you would want to take a look at when you're doing your planning.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Monperry.
I notice you mentioned bathrooms, but that's an issue, was an issue to me when I was teaching. And is there a number, because it really causes, you know, when you're waiting in line with 40 kids to wash hands. It's a sanitary issue to me.
Right.
So is there a number of?
I believe that there are for new facilities. And so you can, you know, that's a guideline, I mean, that the state uses, so that would be a place to start. And we did not look at that as far as the magnet program. But I would suggest that you do look at that because there, again, a restroom is expensive, and you would want to make sure, you know, you can slap portables on, but if you don't have the restrooms and other facilities, it's not good in terms of quality of education.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dixon. We appreciate your being here and helping us out.
I hope that helped to clarify. I'm sorry. It felt like I was confusing last time. So, thank you, thank you.
All right. Now we move to D3. So superintendent Kubin?
Yes. And Dixon, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate the work that you've done in our district. It's been really helpful. So thank you. D3 is regarding Ukiah High School zero period. I, since the beginning of the year, have been approached by Ukiah High School teachers through the, both the Faculty Association and individual teachers to revisit the discussion of a zero period at Ukiah High School. And you all know this story about the change of the start time. And with that vote came a direction to the staff to not have, to not offer zero period. And so the, I asked, as I reported to the board last month, I asked Gordon, our high school principal, to discuss this issue with the site council at Ukiah High School. And if there was a desire to have that discussion brought back to the board, we would do it. And they had their meeting yesterday. So I would like to ask, and B, you were there as well, I heard. So that's great. You can add to anything. But I would like to ask, and the basic, what has been communicated to me through teacher, through the Faculty Association, and also individual teachers, is there's a desire to grow art, music, and career technical education programs. And so they're really struggling within the constraints of a student's regular schedule on how to do that. So that's kind of the meat of the issue. There's not a desire, well, there might be a desire on some parts to go back to an old schedule. There's not a desire, though, to revisit the issue of the start time. It's more of a desire to have the board consider looking at having the administration and staff looking at alternative schedule options, among some other things. So I will be quiet, and I will let Gordon fill us in on the site council meeting yesterday with any comments added from B, and then we will go from there.
Good evening. I think you actually maybe covered everything. It was not a complicated issue on one level. Well-attended meeting, site council meetings, you go many months very lonely, and then suddenly you find yourself with much company, and this would be one of those moments. So it was a well-attended meeting with many teachers that were not members, but rather answered the call through the staff bulletin to come to the site council meeting, provide information input, because that was the request that I had received, is to use that body to do that. And the other item that we dealt with on the same evening was to look at the enrollment and the percentage demographically of our art, our music, and our CTE courses. And that's been an ongoing concern the years that I've been at Ukiah High School. And we're investing tremendously. You as a board, much appreciated, your investment is tremendous in those programs. And those programs, we struggle and students struggle to maintain enrollment, particularly at sophomore year, but really all through the four years. And it's not a simple problem. That's probably one of the most complex problems that we're dealing with as far as enrollment and maintaining programs and growing programs so that the investment really is, that we feel great about that investment. And the results of that will be, do you have students? And is the performance occurring? And is the art occurring? And are kids completers in CTE? And so all of those things were discussed for part of the meeting, and that was because we look at data, and that's the data that we're looking at. And we're gearing up for enrollment in the next about a month and a half. We'll start for next year. And so it's a very serious conversation. It wasn't dovetailed and connected with this discussion for any purpose other than they landed on the same night. We were planning on doing that before this issue arrived to us. But it's a But it's a, a coupling of issues that I think is very good. And it's a complex issue, as I said, on the enrollment. And as we discussed it, what was said, I took about eighteen notes during the portion of the meeting, eighteen separate thoughts about zero period. And all of those supported zero period. And to be quite frank, I've actually, and one of the things that I said at the high school was that, or at the meeting last night was, at the high school, I've actually never heard anybody speak against a zero period, except myself, when the board directive was there would not be a zero period. And I didn't speak against it, I simply said that the start time, regardless, there would be not, not be a zero period. And that was what came out of this board. And I frame it that way because I think it's important that at the high school, if you wandered around and looked for somebody that didn't want a zero period, it would be difficult because it's not a voice that you're hearing. And the people that were in that room were speaking in favor of zero period. I think it's just one puzzle if, if, and the advocacy that, that they were offering is, it did go back to the, the ability of students to be enrolled in art, in music, and in CTE classes. And it doesn't mean that necessarily a zero period would be one of those courses, but rather, a couple of years ago, the idea was floated around that if you offered a limited zero period, whether it be PE for ninth and tenth graders and an English or a history for eleventh and twelfth, that valve of one class for a limited number of students that are trying to access band or Mesa, that can make all the difference in the world. And I think that that's, the, the conversation kept circling around those. There was one or two comments regarding students that do need to work economically and that what we can do to support those families if it's a zero period, it works. And as I thought about what I was hearing, and I also thought about the conundrum that we have with enrollment, and I think that enrollment, it's, it's, so much has changed in the last twenty years. We have far more AP classes. The competitive nature of college admissions is driving kids actually to impact their schedules or pack their schedules in something that never existed even twenty years ago. And it's, I believe it's more complex than it was twenty years ago. I think that the things that we need to look at, and if I were to frame this picture, in the end, I think that, I started thinking about, what's a goal? What's a goal for this conversation? What, if you wanted to have a conversation and you wanted to research something, what would be that goal? And to me, the clearest way that I can express, express it is that I think we need to optimize the resources that we have to support student involvement and engagement in art, music, and CTE. And that's not a one solution. To meet that goal will not be one item. I would suggest that it should include, if you're looking at solutions of how to do that, it should include an honest conversation about zero period and about the parameters that you can place on zero period so that what you don't want to have happen, doesn't happen. And what I mean by that is a wholesale slide where suddenly you have half the school on a zero period. I think that we're not talking about that many people and you can build parameters, it's important to build parameters. I think that setting up parameters is also important from a perspective of when you meet a kid, and when I first started in the business as an administrator eighteen years ago, one of the very first things I dealt with was a, a school that wasn't allowing students to get credit for college classes and, in the summer before they started high school. And these kids were doing what was right and they were denied credit before they started high school. And there is a way that you can make that happen and we made it happen. And, and I think this issue, the, the lack of access to art, music, and CTE, it's sort of falling in that camp of, there are kids out there that want to do something and our system isn't necessarily allowing that. And I think that when that happens, we owe it to ourselves to study it. I would suggest studying, it isn't just about zero period. There is something, I believe, in the strategic plan about alternative bell schedules. I, I don't know if there's a solution in there. I know we have a problem and I can show you the enrollment figures, but I'm, I'm not prepared to do so now, but we, you can come on over and we can look at them. And I think B could speak to that, yes, there is a, there is a problem. I think our enrollment process, it also needs to be adjusted. And that happens within my A building. And that's the creativity that my, my team needs to deploy. And it's also their acceptance that we will do business differently in the way that we recruit and in the way that we position kids and all of the above. And that's a much longer discussion, but change is hard for people and I'll say that when it, some people aren't quite ready to grasp that, but enough's enough already because we need to help students get in the right class the first time rather than waiting. The third area, in addition to bell schedule and enrollment practice, is to look at whether other schools that have greater enrollment in, in the art and the music and, and the CTE. The CTE, the enrollment isn't so much the issue, it's the right kid in the right class. But for the art and the music, I think all high schools struggle with this and we're all coming up with different solutions. And I would say that needs to be a part of that solutioning as well. I think that what we're going to find is a number of them are going to have zero periods. And the reason I'm standing in an advocacy of, let us include all of these things in this study is because I, I think if you set out to try to solve a problem and you decide you're not going to talk about a certain thing and then you find out that everybody else, that's how, here's how they did it, and then you decided, well, that kind of works. And I think most schools don't do zero period with parameters. There aren't contracts that are circulating and there aren't applications of how you end up in a zero period. And I would be a very strong advocate for that. I'm not sure that I would be an advocate for zero period if it didn't involve a, an application and a contract. And that is simply because we, I would use that as a tool to get kids to do more, not to do less, or not figure out an easier pathway. And finally, I think a, a piece of our art and our music and our CTE is also the utilizing both campus and community performance and shows to showcase and enhance that. And that's a, it's a different, you know, a different driving force. And so I, I stand before you saying, this is one piece to a puzzle. And I know it's on the agenda because it was seemingly its own puzzle or its own issue. And that's not the way that I'm viewing it. I will say that the people that spoke yesterday, they tethered and tied it to it, but not as, I, I think in the end, that's where people were landing. I'm, I think that my approach, they weren't thinking about all these other things, but I am. And so that's where I'm at. And I think that, again, do you know that the resounding voice in that room was, yeah, we'd like to be able to consider this. And I know that's, may not sit well in certain corners, but there you are and I'll, I'll take your questions, your comments, and that's what I have for you. And B, if you wanted to chime in about the meeting, you could do that as well. B attends all of our site council meetings and she did so well long before I arrived. So I, it wasn't just sort of for this issue, but rather she's there every month.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
It was a very interesting meeting. I appreciate hearing everything that I did. I'm trying to remember back when we, the original zero period started, which was twenty-five, thirty years ago. Did you, did you have a zero period? Do you remember during that time? You don't remember?
That was a long time.
Okay. Well, I, you did. Okay, right, okay. I'm trying to remember which set of my kids had it. Anyway, and it was done at that time because of the jazz band. They did not have enough periods in the day to do it. And Phil Gary figured out something with them and they did it and it was, it worked out very well. From there, little by little, it expanded and then it, it became everybody because everybody kept wanting to do it. What I heard from you guys was very interesting because of, for me, the, the CTE program, the, the hooking into it, the importance, you were working yesterday with the site council explaining the importance of using this grant appropriately and that you were wanting more kids. But the problem was that many of the kids who could or would or might take some of these classes could not take them because their schedules were impacted on A through G and they thought they couldn't do it. And lots of other reasons. And so this was one avenue of opening up some of these programs, such as a band or choir that wasn't happening. There, there was some interesting stuff from the band teacher there who was saying, we have all these new instruments and they are not being used because there are not enough kids at this point. And you wanted to bring them in, more kids in, but it was, you have to grow your program. But if there are not enough periods in the day, they cannot. They also, there was also PE that wanted to have, what, the B, I don't know, BFF, BSF, whatever Aaron calls it. BS, thank you. And, and so there are, it seemed to me that if there were a few classes, there were teachers that were willing and wanting to teach a few classes at the zero period for specific reasons. And it just, it made sense to me, at least to discuss it, to see how, how, how helpful it would be to bringing in more kids for more programs that they would be missing otherwise. And so I'm, I'm glad that you brought it, but I don't know if the rest of the board is no or what. I mean, I would like to hear which would be the classes you would do and, or at what effect it would have. But that's my stuff.
And B, I think, I think that that, when I suggest, there's about five different things that we need to look at. I think that that's the research that we need to do. And as I told Deb this morning, it is work for, for us. But it's work that I'm happy to do because we have to solve this problem. When you talk about unused instruments, I think the strongest two voices in that room are two young teachers in their first and second year who are doing very good work for us in choir and in band. And I don't, I think that it's not about also just students being in classes, it's also about retaining qualified, great teachers because they want to grow programs and they come from areas where there are solutions. And they can offer many examples that are zero period. These are two young teachers that are coming, we don't need to be suspicious of their past nor suspicious of their desire to arrive at work super early in the morning. These are people that have no history. These are people that just arrived and they're trying to do the very best for the organization. Those that lived through the, the early days, I'm frankly a little bit suspicious of their motives. These guys, I'm not suspicious. And I'm not suspicious of art, music, and all of that. I just think it's worthy of research is what I think. And that's what I'm telling you. So there you are. More questions or comments?
Questions from the board?
I have some questions and I'll hold my comments.
Trustee? Go ahead, trustee.
I'll hold my comments till after all the questions have been asked because I have some pretty strong comments as well. But if, if we didn't change, if we had not changed the start time, what options would you be looking at right now? If the start time was still seven thirty, what options would you be looking at to solve your problem?
I actually think that the, and let me say about the later start time is that, that I think it was the right move. And I tell people that all the time. I was in the journalism class, they did a press conference with me today and they asked about that. And press conference was just a funny term. And it was actually good. And they, and most of the students, and I don't want to start a debate, but I meet many students that, that appreciate the later start time. There are those that don't and, but I don't question that decision at all. I think that your question about what would we do, I actually think a later start time makes it easier to have a strategic zero period because it, it starts at a time that is still within the reasonable arena of humanity versus...
But, but that's not my question. My question's like, if that wasn't an option, let's pretend that we did go through...
Oh, you're saying right now with...
So I'm saying if we didn't go through four years of struggling through this issue and we still were at a seven thirty start time.
Right.
What, and you have the same problem you have right now, what would you be looking at to solve it?
The other four things that I put on, that I, those four. And we wouldn't have this option frankly, I, I can't imagine. There are schools, and there was a reference in the meeting yesterday, that somebody said there was a school that had a double zero and they started the, the band kids at six. And I'm not interested in that. I, I just think that you do need to have a line somewhere. And I think that when we started at seven thirty, I think there were people that were clamoring for a zero period at that time. I just think that that gets to be outside of the parameter of what we might call realistic. I think that, you know, the start time being pinned at eight fifteen, you would have to back that zero up to seven fifteen. I think that one of the conversations that we are going to have to have is the, the three schools starting at a similar time and the traffic problem and we're going to need to do some adjustment on that. And I think that that, that can also be joined into this as far as if the high school were five or ten minutes later or something like that, that adjusts that. But honestly, I don't, at the time, the three years that I had that seven thirty schedule, I, I was not that interested in a zero period. I just think that's very early. Does that answer the question?
No. But that's okay, we can move on.
Could you, do you want to try again? Maybe I'm, I, third time's the charm.
No, I don't, I guess I don't want to belabor it, but I, I'm trying to, trying to say, you, you said there's other options that you are thinking about of how to solve this problem that don't include a zero period. And the only reason you have the option of a zero period is because we made a decision to start the schools later. It wasn't an option in the past.
Yeah. No, what I, I don't have other options at this point. What I'm asking this evening, what I would suggest this evening is with the directive to, okay, go research the things and report back, it's the, I don't know what else is out there of to try to solve this problem. And honestly, much of the work in scheduling and much of the work in analysis and all of that, in the last three years, we were hyper focused on, on A through G rate. And hopefully you had the opportunity to read, we're doing tremendous work. The kids are performing at a fantastic level. We were up to thirty-four point nine percent from twenty percent four years ago. It's the highest rate since nineteen ninety-nine. And we're doing great work there. And when you're doing great work, the next page we're turning over is, okay, guys, time to fix this other issue. And there's a couple more issues that are coming up later, but you go step by step. And honestly, we needed to get that rate up. And now it's up and we need to get it up a little bit more, but this is the time we need to do, and we need to address this. And for me as a manager, what I would say is that we need to do this research because you're spending a lot of money on art and on music, particularly music. And we're, our young teachers are saying, we need more. We need more people in here, what are we going to do about this? And I commend them for that. That's fantastic. You hired, we hired great people. So, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask another question?
Okay.
So it, if, you know, I'm not really familiar with high school schedules, so I'm simplifying this, but, and I don't even know if you have six or seven periods. How many periods?
We have six periods.
Six periods. So you're basically saying you need a seventh period for some classes? You need a seven, some students need a seventh period.
Some kids would need that, yes, to avail them of...
So is it an option to add it at the end of the day? Why is that not looked at?
Yeah. You could, you, you, I, you could start a zero period and start a school day whenever you wanted, or you could have a seventh period. Yes, you could do that as well. I think that that begins to, I think most schools go for the zero period option simply because of the crossover with students that are either working or they have athletic commitments or other commitments. And so I think most schools go the other direction. And, but I would think that in, in researching that, most definitely, that, I would look at everything. I mean, it, and again, I'm not, so I'm looking for a solution, I'm not selling anything today. And I believe research in all ways should be a part of finding a solution. I don't think we should hamstring research.
Okay. Trustee Nelson, and then we'll come back.
One, one question that you asked when you were pitching us was, you know, what is the goal, what is our goal?
Right.
And I think my answer to that question is the academic success of the kids. And when we originally discussed this later start time, there wasn't a piece of data that suggested anything except that a later start time was better. And so my concern is to undermine that when we're just getting started on this new time schedule would be something that I would be pretty hesitant to, to jump for. One of my thoughts in, in listening to you was, well, we could go earlier or we could go later. And I, I think that a seventh period as opposed to zero period is something that should be looked at. And I had one other thought that was really excellent. Anyhow, I hesitate to undermine kind of what we've just started and hopefully we'll see the fruits of apparently a really long conversation. I've only been around for a few years, so it's still rather new, but it was a very easy decision for me to make just because the data that was presented at the time was overwhelmingly pointed that students are more successful with a later start time. If there's other data that suggests that a zero period would be something that we should look at, then we should look at that as well. Because again, I know that you're a data guy... Because again, I know that you're a data guy and the data pointed in one direction for this particular issue, but perhaps for some of these other programs, maybe a seventh period isn't as good, maybe a zero period is. I would be willing to listen to that, but just from the information that we had, especially from Mr. McGregor, it was pretty overwhelming that the later start time was good. So I'd be hesitant in, in kind of undermining that right now.
Yeah, and Tyler, I think anecdotally what I would say was, it's the right decision. And people would argue with me, but anecdotally, and I think that you'll never get great data on, did this start time, the later start time, change the school or that school? I will trust pediatricians, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm not in the business of questioning the, all those pediatricians. And I don't think you were either. And you were persuaded by that, I agree. I think anecdotally on UKI High School's campus right now, and kids are interesting when you talk to them, many of them would agree with that. I talked to some at SHOTS that were studying and we had this conversation an hour and a half ago, and they agreed. And so I, and I think when I talk about parameters, when I heard what you were saying about academics, it's entirely possible that you construct the parameters of a student being enrolled so that they're trying to achieve something, whether it's A through G and band membership or Mesa, that you can have a GPA thing on there. We can do whatever we want in those parameters. And part of it is also thinking as, as adults and elders, is that if you can create structures where people have to achieve to get this, rather than you just get it because you want it, I think you can actually compel people to be higher achievers. And that's actually what we should be doing. And so I think that that academic concern is real in the decision that you made. And I think it's possible to look at this issue and say, okay, Mr. Nelson most definitely wanted us to attend to that. And so how does that work? You know? And I, you know, I, so that's how I'd respond to that. Okay?
Okay. Trustee Arkin.
Yes, I wanted to kind of tag on to Megan here, to go back to where it was originally. The, when they did the jazz band at 7:30, what happened was, it used to be tagged at the end. That's the question you're asking. It was at the end of the day. And it was, it wasn't just the jazz band, there were a couple of other programs. And they, by the end of the day, they have had it. The teachers have had it, the kids have had it. And so somebody, I don't know, came up with the idea, well, we're here early, why can't we do it? So that's what brought it to the early start. And that's what happened. And I don't think anyone is asking, let's change the schedule. I mean, we've gone through that already, then it's a whole other thing. I think it's just adding certain periods. And at that time, there was less, there was less pressure on the kids for all these kinds of AP classes and honors classes and all the stuff that's there. There's a lot of stuff now with the added bonus of the emphasis on CTE classes that we, that are important, that I hear at SSC, how you, people continuously want to make sure that kids have, get a broad spectrum of learning stuff. And having a few classes come early with people being awake, which teachers feel that they are awake and they better awake early in the morning, as well as some kids better awake, but not the whole school. And I think that's kind of, it would be interesting to bring that back, but that's just how I feel.
Trustee Fernandez.
So I, I appreciate wanting to grow music and, and CTEs. I think that's, that's great. I thought, I agree with Tyler, I thought that the research showed that it was best for all students to have a later start time. And so I feel like if you're looking at select groups of students, or you're saying, well, these students will be okay waking up early because they come from middle-class families or because they have their own transportation, to me, it opens up sort of a can of worms. And I wonder, I know that, I believe PE is sometimes an issue because students have to take PE and they aren't able to take electives. And I wonder, I know you can take a varsity sport and accounts for PE, is there thought about doing things like you take, if you play a JV sport where you practice as much as a varsity sport, that that can count as your PE? Or if there's other creative ways to meet the needs of the art classes? Because I'm afraid if we say, okay, let's look at how we can accommodate it, people are going to say, zero period, that's the answer. Without, I mean, you may want to do the research, but I'm afraid that the greater population will say, well, zero period seems like the obvious answer. Instead of really trying to look at other ways to do it, that'll be like the easy solution. And it felt like we worked really hard to get that later start time. And I would hate to see it sort of slip away or to say that it's, it's, it's okay for those kids to be at schools that early in high school now because they're taking music. But at the same time, I, I too want the program to grow. So I, I wish there were an easy answer. Zero period to me seems like something I would definitely like to avoid.
Trustee Monper.
First of all, I want to commend you on your column. I, I read it a few days late, but it was, it was very encouraging to see the progress you've made in, in all the areas you talked about. I want to make one comment about Bea's comment. We talked about this before, but I, I know they were tired at the end of the day, but if you start at seven in the morning, then who's ever in that six? I remember arguing this at Pomalita, every teacher would scream about getting the last period until they rotated it all. So you're always going to be tired at some point. I had another question that somewhat related is that I, I spoke to somebody whose grandchild has dropped off at the high school at 7:10 and goes to the library. I'm curious, how many children are doing that? Because that seems to defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Well, yeah, and I don't have a number for you. Our reaction to open the library was simply a reaction of safety.
Yes, I know.
And people drive their, drop their students off, we can't really command them to do this or that. I suppose we could, but I don't think that, that the taxpayers really want us to do that. And so they were dropping them off and we made the decision to staff the library, move it up 30 minutes so that they had a place to be, because I think that's important.
No, I agree.
And so that's what we do. I, I, you know, one of the, what's interesting when you're on campus and you watch that is that people begin to arrive at seven, I would say 7:15. It's just like a wave that's coming in and then around 7:30, the wave evens out, but there's this constant flow in. And what I admire about what happens in the morning is the students spend a lot of time talking with one another. If you were there, you would see them not texting and they're talking. And if nothing else, that's worth whatever the price of admission is, right? And they're out there, and then when the bell rings, they're not running, they're walking. And at the 7:30, I will tell you that I never saw a sense of frantic herd as that. And, and people may not believe me and they want to argue with me, I don't know. I was the guy from the other planet and arrived and looked and said, whoop. And so, yes, the library is open.
No, I was just curious and anyway. I mean, I know this is a hard issue and I know the issue of getting out later and working, but, you know, I guess I feel sometimes it's our responsibility to really teach leadership and really emphasize what's important. I know there are some school districts who don't allow their students to work after, just because they feel that it impacts learning and the time they should be doing homework or doing other things. So, and the other issue I have is somewhat, what has been raised before is if you get into the murky area of which students get to do zero period, how do you decide equitably who's allowed to do that? How can you say no to one parent and yes to another? And I know in the past, we bussed students to zero period and it was an enormous expenditure. And we did that so that we could avoid that issue because that way everybody had a chance to do zero period. These are just some mementos from the past, but they're some of the issues that I think about. And I, I guess I tend to agree with Tyler and Zoe that we researched, we spent so many, so many hours talking about this. And I was on record as saying that if we do this, I know that they're going to come for zero period and I am, you know, I declared it. And I guess I wish that more of an emphasis, more things had been brought to the board at the time we were discussing it, rather than waiting for it to be in place and then raising the issue. So I would just urge you to try and figure out, look at some of the districts and try and figure out some other way to achieve your goal, which I approve of, rather than slip back into zero period.
And, and I think that, you know, the two comments regarding equity, I think that did come at Site Council meeting. And that is something that I have, you know, I begin every staff meeting and end every staff meeting with a slide that has the word equity and a period on it. And, and I'm sure that annoys some people, but they can get over that. And, because I think it is important. And I think that it does also need to be a part of the solution. Because part of what we looked at is the data of the percentage of each of the ethnic groups, as well as male and female, and socioeconomically disadvantaged in all of these elective classes, in the arts and the CTE classes. We look at that for honors and AP and A through G. And I think that the comments that were made at Site Council were really about, well, how do we address that issue, just as you've asked it? I think that that should be a part of the challenge. And, and quite honestly, if you can't provide, whether it's MTA passes or figure out how to solve that, then I would probably be, you know, I don't want to pick a side right now, but I would have a real problem with that. And that's because we do have a real problem in a number of our, our really critical, you know, leadership and, and art and music areas where we don't have that demographic. We're, we're getting much better in the other courses. I just think that's important. And I would make that a part of the solution in, in the exploration as well, you know, because it is important. And, you know, the, the next one, the next page that you might see coming toward you will be data about our athletic demographic participation. And that one ought to send some rattles out because transportation's going to be, I think, a key in that. But our aim is to solve that one too. People just don't know it. They might know it now because it says here it's televised. And so the world knows now. It's amazing.
In the interest of moving this along, trustee Olgaard, did you have something you wanted to add?
All right, so let's get this straight. You're calling me after you say, in the interest of moving this along, on the particular topic of early start times. This is a recipe for disaster. I will not recite the list of questions I have here. I, I guess I will ask, all right, so I will ask, I will say one thing. I am very willing to be on a committee that brainstorms lots of different solutions to the perceived problems and to the real problems after the data is studied to find out what they really are. In terms of bell schedules, enrollment, college, online, independent study stuff, summer, happy to do all that. You know what? I'm not even going to go into any questions. Happy to volunteer.
Thank you.
Trustee Van Zant, you asked to say something and, and then we may have some public comment, which I should have asked for before.
I, I think that, that Zoe said something that stuck with me. Although zero, zero period sounds like it's the obvious and easy answer, I don't, in my view, it's not the best answer. And I, I'm not interested, I'll just lay it out here, I'm not interested in having that as an option. Certainly not now, when we have just implemented this later start time. We've given it no time at all to see what the impacts are. I would rather you came here and asked me for $500,000 than zero period. I know no one else would.
Careful what you ask for.
If you came here, I mean, that's, that might be a lot, but if you came here and said, we need this money in order to solve this problem, I would be far more open to that than the zero period discussion. So I can't speak for the rest of my board members, but that's how I feel. And I would advocate for that, if that, that's what you wanted to do to solve your, your issues. I think that the point Gail made about equity is really important to me. It, it's really hard for me to see, I can't believe we're having this discussion. This is exactly what we said would happen. We would start this start teams later, we would begin a zero period, we'd be advocated for, and the whole thing, we would be exactly where we came. This is exactly the same conversation that probably happened 10 years ago when we started this zero period and then all migrated to zero period. So that's what I'm struggling with. I do see your issue. I hope you can find some good ways to solve it. And just to explain my viewpoint, which may not be valid anymore, but it, it might help explain why I respond the way I do to this. I, I'm not interested personally in supporting the overachiever culture. I worry about it. It's not the experience I had because I went to such a tiny school, there was not a single AP course offered. There just wasn't those kinds of options for me. But I was able to attend Ivy League college and it was not an issue. So I know that was a long time ago and maybe things have changed, but that's the mentality I'm coming from. It frustrates me as a parent that I have to already kind of shelter my daughter from the overabundance of opportunities that there are for her because I don't think it's in her best interest to be overscheduled and have seven periods a day and start school at seven in the morning and, you know, come home at eight o'clock at night every night. So, so that's just where my viewpoint is as a parent. And, but as a board member, again, I, I would rather you came here and asked me for a lot of money for the zero period. So I, I'm not in support of it.
Okay. Debbie, do we have any requests?
Should I have to fill out a form of request?
No, if, if you would like to come to the podium.
Hi. I'm Jeff Silver Brown. I teach government economics at UKI High School. I am not here to advocate for advanced placement or any programs that I'm associated with. I'm here to tell you that when I went to the school Site Council meeting and over the course of last year and this year, I've seen a tremendous amount of excitement with CTE classes, band, chorus, choir, and the arts. And when I went to the meeting yesterday, I saw young, passionate teachers that had resources sitting idle, including themselves. And it simply asked for the chance to have students get the most out of their experience at the high school that they could get. There's a reason why putting these classes in the afternoon is not the most efficient use of resources. It's because those resources are going to be already in use and inefficient. Between the hours of 7:30 and 8:30, students have the opportunity, they are willing students to use all the resources that the school has at its capacity. And right now, there are instruments that are laying idle, there's art supplies that are laying idle, there are willing teachers, passionate teachers, young teachers, that are totally idle with a willing student population. And we're talking about equity. Denying them that choice is denying them equity. Being a leader is taking the resources that you have put towards these programs and using them to their maximum efficiency, their maximum capacity. Not doing that is denying these kids opportunity. Now, I understand that the decision, I'm, this is not about start time. I'm one of those that don't agree with the start time. But what I do agree with is that you use the resources that you committed to the best of their ability. And you have them there waiting for you, you have a willing student population. I ask you to have a serious discussion about a zero period. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay. Superintendent Kubin.
I know this is a really difficult discussion for the board. I, I don't think that the high school is asking to revert back to an old start time. I, I too want to be part of a solution that maximizes our enrollment in those classes. We have one of our new teachers sitting in the audience tonight who's done an amazing job. I just loved watching our band perform at football games and I really want to support us maximizing those resources that we have at the high school. Maybe there are different solutions. I, I don't think zero period is for everyone. I think we should carefully consider and counsel kids into and out of it if we ever offer it. I think it should be extremely limited, but I don't think there is a black and white answer for everything. And, and I, I'd like for us to be open to allowing the high school to explore. And I understand the board's position too, and I will totally go out and support it. I just, I, I taught zero period at a high school. I think many, many high schools have a zero period, not just to help high achievers, but to help kids who are English learners who have to take ELD during the day, give them an elective course, to help our Mesa students access an elective course, not just music, but maybe scrubs, welding, auto shop, all of those classes. A lot of kids, when they hit their sophomore year, they, they don't have access to that anymore. And so maybe if not this year, I, I'd like the board to eventually be open to at least allowing the high school to explore. And I know that's not the, the answer that you might want to hear, but I think it's important to, to look at a lot of different solutions, including that one. And I know that's not the, the answer that you might want to hear, but I think it's important to, to look at a lot of different solutions, including that one. And it would be interesting to see how many high schools around us do have zero period. I've seen it used in a very limited way. And again, I know that's maybe not the answer that some board members want to hear, but I think that we need to be open to things.
Okay. Thank you, Gordon. Did you have something else, trustee Arkin?
Well, do you, do we need to ask to go forward or not go forward? Is this what this is, other than just information?
Well, because... Right, because, I mean, the board took, when the board took action to change the start time, they specifically said no zero period. It might be interesting, I put the board policy in on the school day in this item, because really, the board's job is to set policy. And so it might be interesting in the future to, to look at the policy and see how the policy might be modified, because it currently, it currently calls for flexible scheduling. And my experience in allocating full-time equivalent teachers to a school site is it's based on a formula. They're allocated their FTE, and how they choose to use that allocation is really a site decision, making sure that all of the classes that need to be offered are offered, but how they're offered is somewhat flexible. We've offered, in the past, we've offered a seventh-period cyber-high school class to allow kids to do credit recovery, but it wasn't, it didn't cost more money. It was all within the parameters of the budget that was given to those sites. So in the future, eventually, I, it sounds like there's a majority of the board that doesn't even want to consider zero period as part of a solution, but in the future, we should probably talk about this policy sometime.
Well, I, I actually like the way that you put it, Deb, and I would like, with Ann involved, be on some, a committee with the high school to think of all these various options. I, I don't want to lose that. There's some very enthusiastic teachers that would really like to do this, and it's also some students. And I don't, just because they will explore it and come up with a variety of ideas does not mean we have to accept it, but maybe they can come up with some good ideas. And, and I want to say one thing to you, Gail, it was not at a great expense, that zero period, that period, that was paid out of SSC funds that Phil Gary finagled out of us, and that's how it was paid, and not through, through district money.
So...
That's what I would want to...
Does our student board member, Devon, do you have any insight?
Okay, so I've taken all six classes, all four years, and they've all been towards classes that go to college. And the elective that I took was leadership, because I thought it looked really good on a college application. However, I was very interested in playing the guitar, but I never had the class time or the class load to have the class for a beginning guitar. And I almost took it this year, but my class load was full, and I feel like a zero period would be very nice for kids who are interested in the musical arts or whatever.
Thank you very much. So where do we want to give direction to superintendent Kubin? Yes, Tyler?
Again, this was a data-driven decision that we made to start the high school's start times later. I think that new data or new ideas are always interesting, and I wouldn't be opposed to listening to new ideas, especially a seventh period. I thought one thing that the superintendent said was really interesting, is looking to see what schools around us do, to see what the options are. I think that's really important, and we might be able to apply that to the honors English class as well.
Touche.
Just, just a suggestion that the superintendent brought up, that I thought was exceptional. I, again, I, this was a data-driven, if there's new data, I think it would be, it would be worthy of looking into.
So should we take trustee Arkin and trustee Bogart upon their suggestions that they would be on a committee to work with superintendent Kubin and principal Osland?
Well, I don't need to be on the committee, but Ann can be.
I think Ann was, Ann, you can, maybe you should describe what committee you're talking about. Did the committee include zero period as an option or not?
In order to encourage vibrant exchange of ideas...
I would be happy to leave zero period there. I think that if people who are new to the area pull up some of the previous minutes, they will see how deeply some of us researched school start times, and how unlikely it is we would change our minds. So I think that that is something realistically they need to know. But this is not the same board that passed it, or is it? This is the same board that passed it. But it changes every two years. We get new members and stuff, so things change. So...
You're trying to get voted out.
I am trying to get voted out. That is true. That is true. So looking at all options, including zero period, is fine for me, but I think if I were a betting man, I would say I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock in that zero period, just because of the, the recent history in the last four years.
I think, while I appreciate your flexibility, trustee Bogart, and your open-mindedness, I don't think I share it, in that I'm afraid that we're prolonging the confusion for the committee that would be working on this. It's my thought. I would be interested in a committee or a further study that came back with some ideas on how to solve this, including ideas that may cost money that did not include zero period.
I would be much more interested in that as well. And the only reason I was leaving the other open, as you said, was to encourage as many ideas to come forward as possible. But I don't, I, I mean, I have, we don't have a piece of data besides principal Osland's anecdotal data that more children are talking in the morning, which is fabulous, but we have no data on whether or not it has helped, has it increased attendance, has it decreased illness, decreased tardiness. We don't have any of that data. So... Wait, maybe I should finish my thought. Because that probably only made sense to people who have had this conversation 29 times already. Because we don't have any data, it doesn't make any sense to me to change what we're trying. So that's why I'm not terribly interested in changing it at this point. But I think there's lots of creative things we could be doing, and I'm happy to look at them, and I really like the fact that new people come with new energy, and we should be trying, you know, a couple new things every year.
Would the entire staff of the high school count as data in support?
I'm sorry, what?
Would, would, would a staff, like, if it was a unanimous staff issue, that they supported some form of zero period, would that be counted as data?
Uh, would it be data? I don't know if it would be data. Here's, here's the question that I, well, here's the question, wait a minute, I'm probably not supposed to answer that, am I? From a, from a guy in the audience.
No.
But we can talk about it later.
We have a committee.
All right.
So, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I, you know, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to start talking about formation of community or committees only, because I have a site council, and I've said repeatedly, and will continue to say, that, that I believe the site council is the committee that should own these types of issues. I believe that my job is to, and have my team research and come up with all the information that we can, and then bring it to that. And anybody is welcome to join that committee and be at that site council. And I think it's important, because those are people that show up month in, month out, and they do good work for us, and they do good work for you. And my hesitancy in committees is that suddenly all of those people who are doing that work year in and year out, they're on the outside, and I think they're plenty capable of examining anything that we bring to them and say, "Look, here's everything that we're finding." And if, so that's what I would say about, you know, the committee idea, is that we have a committee, it's called a site council, and I like them and I trust them, and I thank them.
Superintendent Kubin, do you have anything to add to that?
So, but what is the direction from the board, Deb?
I think the direction is to not pursue anything related to zero period. That's what I'm hearing consensus of the board on. I don't hear that from everyone, but I think I've heard it enough to know that we should not be looking at that as an option. Is that correct?
I, you know, this is an extraordinarily uncomfortable conversation, and I don't want to have it again. So I suggest that we be really clear. I, I've made my position really clear, but I actually don't know whether it's shared by the majority of the board. So since this already is uncomfortable, and we're revisiting a policy decision that we made already, we might as well continue and finalize the uncomfortable conversation, in my opinion, because I would rather the committee, the school site council, not come, explore these ideas, and then come back and us to say no. I don't want to do that.
That's my concern.
I'm already doing that right now. So I don't want to do it twice. And if there's not a majority of the board that feels that zero period should not be an option, then we should, we should know that now. I don't know, I actually don't know.
So do we need to take a poll of the board, or...
Sure.
All right. We'll start with trustee Arkin.
Yes, I, I feel it should be.
You agree what?
That it should be in the discussion of zero period, yes.
Okay.
I, I do not.
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 Well, I believe it should be part of the discussion.
So, but that's a majority of the board, who doesn't not believe it does?
Right. That's right. Okay.
I, I would, I would reiterate again, that, that I would, I personally would be open to solutions that may cost money. So if you're having that conversation with the school site council, we do, we are in charge of the budget. I don't know what my superintendent thinks about this, but I, I would personally would not be opposed to hearing solutions that had a cost attached to it, because I think it's important for you to solve these problems.
I agree it's important for me to solve these problems, and clarity does count for something. I have many, would you say, things that I could say about the $500,000 to head it our way. I'll reserve those. We look forward to it.
Do love now, got to wait till next month.
So, to let you know that, that I read a list of five different things we'll explore, I now have a list of four things. And our commitment is to solve this problem. I think I got my direction, and so I appreciate that part. So thank you.
I appreciate the rest of your list, too. I think those are all very important.
Thank you.
And Gordon, if you could thank the staff for bringing this issue up, I would appreciate that, from me.
I will do that.
And I would just like to make one statement. I was, tried to be quiet and just conduct this tonight, but I just want to clarify my position, that I really would like to honor the commitments we've made to the arts and to our music and CTE. I think they're so important. And I remember stating myself at this meeting, when this decision was made, I could not believe that we were going to ask students to take a music class as a freshman, and then they wouldn't be able to take it again until maybe their senior year because of the expectations of AP classes. And I just think that's a terrible disservice to our music and art programs, so, that's my reasoning.
May I ask one clarifying question, as I explore creative options, which is, I did not hear that a seventh period was off the table, or the after, after-school...
Anything.
At one point in time, the district fostered even an evening jazz class. Look forward to midnight music. That was a joke, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a break?
All right, break time. All right, break time.
That looked at first bringing people from all walks of life. So we had district employees as well, we had community agencies, as well, we had parents that attended. And so it really was bringing them together. Before you can move forward on any type of strategy, you have to have clear principles and intentions that teams agree on, and then move forward to what tensions are in the room, which is really important. Because if you can't talk about the elephant in the room, it's really difficult to move forward, to make progress. And so after moving past those pieces, we looked at strategies and started coming with outcomes that we could move forward with. Some of the, after, after the second day with our, our next steps that, whoops, I'm sorry, I went too fast. No, I didn't, I'm sorry, there we go. At the very end with our strategies, we came with next steps and what that would look like. And one of the pathways was to train educators and administrators in various topics. And so we really wanted to have a legal training with Carl Corbin, who is one of our legal representatives, to come up here and educate administrators in special, special education, general education, and 504. Because they have very specific legal parameters around them, and it's really important that they're up to date on current information. Another piece that we were looking at, and which is part of the multi-tier support system that the state is looking at, is discussing universal design learning, which is a differentiated instruction, that's kind of in a nutshell what that looks like, and discussing that with administrators and what that looks like. Really looking at different training opportunities for our paras. And one avenue that we've started looking at is to look at online paraprofessional training. We have time for paraprofessionals on early release days, that they have time to collaborate with, with teachers and each other. But this might be another opportunity to bring in a variety of expertise and allow them to grow and know their position. Because again, they're so different from our childcare paraprofessionals, all the way through our adult, through our adult special ed programs, that they really could utilize that training. So we've been working with HR on that. Another piece is really looking at giving them that dedicated time for training so that they can further. And that was something that came out from our paras that attended, which is really important, that they feel, that they really need to be heard and receive training so that they can support the students in the capacity that they need. Looking at a communication survey, so I actually met with, with paras to talk about what a communication survey could look like from a paraprofessional point of view, how would they maybe like to receive information? I send out weekly emails to my, all of my special ed staff certificated, and then I've had a few other people that have asked to be upon it, just for updates that are coming from the state or updates that are regarding to our IEP program or current things that have happened over the week so that they are equipped. And really reaching out with this survey to our paras is what's the best way for them to communicate? Would they like to receive this? Would they like to have a paper update? Kind of what, what's the best facility for them to receive communications so that they're in the loop? A nice piece about the communication is that at our leadership programs, we have talked about how to get information from district, all the way down to our site and staff down with teachers and paras, and what that looks like. So it's nice that we're having the conversation in task force as well as in leadership at the same time. And we will be having another meeting in January 17th to talk about the continuum of services, which what that looks like is defining our programs and what is available and what we currently have for students. So they, we will be bringing back Sherri Wilkins, who was our task force facilitator before, and we will be offering that again. And I would say if any of the board members are interested in attending and would like to take a day to do that, I, if you would let me know, I'd be more than happy to add you to that list. Thank you. Any questions?
Trustee Mollgar.
What was the name of your facilitator?
Sherri Wilkins. She actually was trained by Steve Zweibach. And it's really nice because she, um...
Is she from Riverside?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So watching, you know, her training and seeing the Steve Zweibach training, she is a master facilitator. And yeah, it's really, it was really nice to see, so.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Do you have anybody other than your staff attending that?
So it's comprised of general ed teachers, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, parents, site administrators, district administrators, and community agencies. So we invited about 60 people and 30 responded.
So which community agencies are, well, how many more meetings are there?
We had RC.
Is this worth talking about?
It would probably, well, this one is just going to focus on the continuum of services. And it should be, Sherri believes that this can be brought forth in one, in one task force meeting for this, to lay it out.
Can you just send me a list of who's on the task force then? I'm having a hard time understanding who's on the task force and who's supposed to be there on January 17th.
It would be all three, it would be, all of them would be invited again to attend.
And how long does this task force keep going then?
So this, this continuum of services probably will be hammered out. There's the, the strategies that were, that we've been implementing with improving communication, those have, obviously, we're just in month one, you know, month one or two after it. So there'll be follow-up dates and there's committees for those. But this one, it might need to meet again. I really would have to see, take the temperature of the, the task force to see how, if, if they're receptive to finalizing it in this one meeting. I would believe that you absolutely could.
I guess I'm not understanding the difference between the purpose and length of time the task force will exist versus the one item of the continuum of services that you're talking about.
I think I understand your question, Anne.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So the task force was formed at the beginning of the year. There were 60 people who Beth talked about, 60 people invited, broad variety of stakeholders, and 30 people came. And so that is the task force.
Okay.
They, they, I attended the first two days. They did some, and by the way, the facilitator, we got through, through Steve Zweibach, he referred us to her.
Oh, good.
And it was magical to see her skills in action.
Oh, that's great.
But the, there was, there was some, a few little team building things in the beginning, not intense, but there was a little bit of work around that to build relationships between people.
Sure.
And I don't know beyond the, and it depends on the, so I think your question is, can people be added for this continuum of services meeting? Or do you want to see the list and then you can tell us?
I guess, I guess, and what, what is the, what is the role of this continuum of services day within the general work of the task force? Is it just the next thing that happens to be on your agenda?
Yes.
And then the February meeting might be some, about a different topic?
No, because that was the only strategy that really did not have it hammered out clearly enough for like a three-month, six-month, 12-month follow-up, follow-up period. That they felt that strategy needed another specific day to just hammer out what that looked like. All the other strategies that were defined had clear paths of, of next steps.
Okay.
And those were where those...
Then I missed the action, I missed the, the action plan or whatever. Have you already sent that out and I just missed it?
I don't think we sent it out, it's not attached.
No, so that, so that...
Just attach it to your next Friday report then, and I'll just read it then. And then I won't have so many silly questions.
Thank you. You just want the detail.
Yeah.
Now, did we get a copy of that when the...
Of your task force outcomes?
Uh-huh. Didn't we get that last year?
Oh, the plan...
Oh, you mean the original study?
Yes.
The original study was given last December at a board meeting, yes.
Yes, so we gave the study, we've done several things in that. One of the things was to form a task force and talk about the special education program, the broader picture. So we, we've done a lot of the actions in the school services recommendations. This is kind of the big ticket one.
So the strategies that, that are on... I think they're pulled from my PowerPoint, right? Yeah, they're pulled from my PowerPoint. So the strategies that are on the, the two-page handout, that are...
This is the brochure that's attached.
The brochure. The strategies are the, the clear, the four clear pieces that came out of the task force. And then each of the strategies had next steps, which were the next steps up here that I, that I laid out, and the next steps that we have already started and/or are completing. Does that make sense? Okay.
Trustee Monpar.
I remember there has been some discussion over the last year, year and a half about, I may as well get everybody angry tonight, about the cost of the program. And one of the things I thought we were going to look at was the model we had and whether there were any adjustments that could be made in order to help control the costs.
So Gail, then our next meeting, looking at continuum of program.
Uh-huh.
It's not about cost containment, it's about program model, basically, that next step. So it'll get to some of that. You're referring to, one of the thing, recommendations that school services made was to, we have a much higher percentage of paraprofessionals in our district than the state average. And so there was discussion around looking at that. So we are in the process, we are in the process right now about looking at a five-year history of special ed costs and pupil enrollment. I don't have much more to report beyond that, only because I think there's a lot more detail that needs to go into it than just the general dollar amount.
Right.
So I think we can get back to the board on the detail around the increases. I haven't fully analyzed it yet and I wouldn't feel comfortable talking about that at a board meeting yet.
Yeah, our district really has grown though, a lot with our special education students. We had, we went from 738 at last year's December pupil count to 771. With our December pupil count just a few days ago, so...
And how does that compare with the statewide average, which is also going up?
It, it, we're still at about 11 or 12 percent, which is about the same as the state. So, and, and that, and that is a, and, and that's really a county-wide trend that they have seen across this year is a pretty significant rise in special ed students and pretty severe in complexity with some of them that have come into this county.
And Beth, I'll just add, that's probably the greatest difference that I've seen is not, because our enrollment has gone up as well, our overall enrollment, but the, the, the students with more severe needs, we're, we're seeing, our new students coming in are, have greater need. And you look at that countywide, you also look at it in our district, their students are more impacted, they need more services. But, and, and the reason why I don't totally want to get into the detail of the budget tonight is just on a cursory look. The increase this year was a little over $400,000, it's in the first interim report. About half of that is the increase that we're giving this year, the salary increases. And so I just, I haven't looked at all the detail for the rest of it yet. And we'd see that increase in salary and benefits across every program in our district. But, so I just, it, to be continued, but we are looking at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Very nice brochure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Kim, thank you for being here too.
I, I hope your next meeting goes well. I can't imagine you're going to solve that in one day.
We have a pretty good facilitator. She's a pretty amazing facilitator.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the garden nutrition program.
So we have Katie and Teri here to present that tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Teri and I have been working hard getting our presentation ready for you. We're really excited to share information about the garden program and what we've done as we've really looked at the program and made improvements over time after recommendations given to us from the board. So, and Teri and I are going to go back and forth a little bit here.
So during this past year, working with the garden specialists, we created amongst ourselves a mission and three goals that we wanted to work on. And those are the next four slides. They are improving academic understanding in science and Common Core, improving health, and engaging students in hands-on science.
So some of the data we wanted to share with you, one of the tasks that we were, as we met with our group last year and came up with ideas of how to improve the garden program. One was really looking at how do we have an equitable program or a program where we have one grade level that goes through completely, where we're really making sure, you know, all kids are getting access to the garden. So we've really been excited this year to, Teri has worked really hard to get all the second grade teachers signed up. And so currently, all of our second grade classes have, are going to the garden. We've also went, looked at, Teri went to the Next Generation Science Standards Training at MCOE. And we were just browsing a document that she created today, looking at how tightly aligned the garden program is to some of the grade levels, and second grade is one of those levels that a majority of the standards are actually covered in the garden program. So we're going to do some more work with that.
Thank you.
As we continue to look at our garden program. But as you can see, a total of about 66 percent, I think we rounded down there. 66 percent of our elementary students are participating in the garden, about 30 percent of our middle school. And I should say, in that elementary number, we are including Eagle Peak and the sixth grade students at the elementaries. We, when we were just doing our calculations, we thought that was easier to put that together. So when you look at the middle schools, 30 percent of the middle schools, you can see those are 10 classes in seventh and eighth grade, and then five special ed classes as well.
So when you say you're including Eagle Peak, you just meant fifth and sixth of Eagle Peak?
Fifth grade.
Just fifth. Okay.
So we just want kind of the elementary model, because they're a bit self-contained.
And then all sixth, you put into total middle, middle?
All sixth except for the sixth grade at the elementaries. So that little...
You left them in ele...
Yes.
Correct, we left them in element, it is confusing.
Sorry. Well, where did you put the sixth that are at Eagle Peak and Pomalita then?
They're currently not participating, they're in middle school.
There's no sixth graders in middle school participating, that's weird.
Yeah, so, so we, that's one thing that we've noticed too, is we've looked at the program that it's more sort of adaptable and it's successful at the elementary grades. But we want to look more at the standards and look at how that's aligned. So that's some, in terms of participation, those are numbers this year. And some of the things that we took, and I'm going to let Teri explain this, but in year two, after we met and we started to implement the Berkeley curriculum, we've continued, we gave a survey last year at the end of the year, and we've continued to make some adjustments to the program based on that. And I'll let Teri explain this.
So that handout that I handed you was created yesterday, that's why it's late. During our workshop, Phyllis Binder, Maureen Taylor, and I worked on it with the NGSS workshop. And we came up with all of those concepts that we need to teach in science, K through five. And then I put check marks on all of the ones that we are teaching in the garden. And then looking at the different grade levels, second grade, we're pretty much covering everything they need to cover in science. Fifth grade is pretty heavy too, for the fifth graders that we're, we're reaching mostly at Eagle Peak. But there are so many science concepts in there that we are able to teach in the garden that we were really thrilled. All three of us, even though they don't have anything to do with the garden, we're really thrilled that that much science is being taught to our students. And then we, there's an ELD component in our, in the curriculum that we have, which really helps to reinforce all of the vocabulary with all of the students, not just our ELD students, but we are working on using that. It is just a couple of questions, but it really does help to make sure that the kids are understanding the vocabulary. And we are still working on aligning all of our grade levels with our bio-region and what the teachers really want to see us teaching. So we've recreated or kind of just moved around some lessons in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and we're, I want to continue to work on those third through fifth. So they still are aligned, aligned with the Next Generation Science and the Common Core. We've decided that they don't fit in the year like they have in Berkeley. So we've taken some things and moved them around and recreated some of the teaching methodology. After watching lessons and after modeling some of the lessons, I realized that we're doing a better job than even the curriculum. So we needed to change that up so that it reflected that in our lessons.
Just have to press it really hard. So the garden TOSA's role, the garden specialists, they've, she's been meeting monthly with the specialists and really bringing new ideas with NGSS, but really looking at trying to systemize the program more. That was some of the feedback that we got in the survey, was making sure that people are scheduled more tightly, that everyone knows when their garden is, and that that was more systematic, so we worked on that. Again, look, last year and this year, the TOSA has done, Teri, a lot of model lessons and assisting in the classes. And that's been really helpful so that she can see how do we need to adjust lessons and make sure they're working well in our garden. Lots of fundraising and coordinating Harvest of the Month, which we've expanded. We let you guys know that last year, we've expanded that into even the high school, along with a couple other grants at Yokeo. And the other thing is doing some nutrition outreach that's required because part of the TOSA is funded through CalFresh. So doing parent nutrition classes at D-LAC, coordinating and writing grants, working with the dietetic interns. And then there is a bullet on the bottom there, the CalFresh outreach at the back-to-school nights. So the, Teri, I don't want to say Teri the TOSA, I don't think that rhymes. Teri's been working really hard and I also realize that we didn't put this on here, but during our professional development, at the beginning of the school year, Teri worked with our garden specialists on one of the, I think it was an optional day, and all the garden specialists came for, it was the whole day, right? Yeah, it was the whole day, to come together and really look at the curriculum and, and learn how the curriculum works.
So this year's survey, we used some of the same questions from last year because we wanted to see how we'd improved and what still needed to, we needed to work on. Between 85 to 100 percent of the teachers agree, or somewhat agree, that the garden program is aligned with NGSS. It's improved this year and it's a good way to teach science. The teachers appreciate the hands-on, you want to do this? The teachers appreciate the hands-on teaching of science, that it's connected to their classroom curriculum. Those were some of the comments. And then some of the comments about what we can still improve on are collaborating with teachers and PLCs. We have not been doing that. And expanding some of the gardens, which is a physical space issue that we have been working on and trying to write grants, and actually trying to implement one of the grants, which has been kind of challenging to find chain link fence that we can afford and, and a company that we can afford to have it put in. So I really appreciate our grounds department because they have really stepped up this year and been helping out a lot with our, with our school gardens. Oh, and the garden journals, I just wanted to hand these out to you, you can take a look at some of them. These are from last year, some of the students, let me have them, at the end of the year, which was very nice of them. But they are a, they capture what those students have learned in science. So there are graphs in there, there are diagrams, at the end, there's a reflection. They are first grade, second grade, and fifth grade, I believe, that I collected. And it's really amazing what is collected throughout the year and how much they have learned just by looking at the journals. And we didn't have that as a part of our program before, and this is actually the best part of our program, is having them do the garden journal. Okay, so future improvements, we'd like to continue to increase the K-1 involvement. And Katie and I put this together before we actually, I looked at the NGSS standards yesterday. And I realized that we are teaching a lot of the fifth grade standards as well. We have really excited fifth grade teachers at Eagle Peak mostly, who are very interested in the garden. And I invite all of you to come out and observe a garden lesson. All of our gardens are really blanketed right now, so they're not really doing much in the garden, but they are still learning science. And if it's not raining, they're outside, if it is raining, they're inside, we have lots of activities that they're doing. We would like to give a, a measurable quiz so that we can measure the data from the second graders from January, and then what they have learned all the way through June. So a pre and a post, and bring that information back to you so that we can see what the growth is. We know there's growth just looking at the journals, but we want to have some measurable data. So we have created a, a survey that's multiple choice that they can fill out. We did have the one that I gave you, that I just went out and interviewed the students and had them answer, but we can't really measure anything with that, other than, you know, three students knew what all of the plant parts were.
And again, we just wanted to highlight, you know, that the two parts of the program are the school gardens and the Harvest of the Month. And the garden and nutrition program budget, so we spend the program costs approximately $250,000 in salary and benefits for staffing costs. You can see the garden TOSA is $109,204. And you can see the breakdown on how that's funded. So 51.5 percent is CalFresh, 45.5 percent, that's the action item in the strategic plan that specifically supports the garden TOSA. And then the 3 percent is what all teachers are funded because of the action around professional learning communities and extended professional learning. And then the garden specialist at 145, uh, $140,500 out of general fund. Materials and supplies are grant, are funded through grants. We take in about $15,000 per year in grants, donations, and fundraising, and that's the job of the TOSA. And then in the, and these are approximate, in the last three years, we've spent $10,000 in materials and supplies. So we have, we've had carryover every year in materials and supplies. And then of course, like Teri stated, then support from grounds. So we wanted to let you know what the budget costs are on that part. And if anyone has questions, we're here for questions.
Trustee Fernandez.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say that this is a very nice report. I didn't have any questions when I read it because everything I would have asked was, you know, all your figures were in there, all your numbers, and it was very thorough. So thank you, it's nice work, and it was nice to see it so laid out so comprehensively.
Trustee Nielsen.
I would like to duplicate exactly what Zoe said. I had a list of things that I was curious about, every single one of them was knocked off. But you did raise one question up while you were speaking. The PLCs, the, I'm going to say it wrong, so that when you talked about the PLCs, what's the, hang up on that, or how is that going to be solved?
We got comments back on our survey that we did with teachers that they would like to have time to work with the garden specialist during their PLC time. This might not be the best year to start that, or maybe it would be with a couple of different PLCs who really would like to request that. I don't think there's a hang up, I think that they, they have never been invited and I have never thought to go, reach out to teachers and say, would you like the... "Would you like the garden specialist to come?" And myself to come to a PLC so that we can show you what we're doing and, you know, show you all the next generation, next generation science standards that we're covering, and work with them.
I know that when you started in on this new gold-plated program, that we asked you to shoot high, and I just want to give you some personal feedback because it looks like that direction is going really well. So, thank you very much.
Is that Trustee Arkin?
Yes.
I wanted to thank you for doing the CalFresh at all the open houses. It's really nice. I mean, a nice atmosphere. What I'm wondering is, what kind of response are you getting from the families as they come in? Because I see you and Jim talking to them at times.
Well, I know Jim is answering specific questions about meals. This year, we focused a little bit on educating families about the Farmer's Market Match program, and we got really great response. Actually, people came and wanted to take the little flyer that we had to their relative, or to their neighbor, or to their mother, to tell them more about that program. So, I thought that was a brilliant idea to coordinate that with CalFresh outreach.
Well, thanks for the food. It was good.
Trustee Munker?
You may have said it because I was reading, but what do you think accounts for the low participation in the fourth and fifth grade other than the fact that they have a very rigorous curriculum?
One, there are less teachers because they have larger classes. And I believe the other thing is about their curriculum. And this year especially with the math. That's what I heard from teachers. "I would really like to do the garden. My kids want to do it, but we're doing two hours of math every day, and I don't have time."
And I also was wondering, have you, I saw that you were doing nutrition lessons with the D-LAC, and have you had good success with that and good participation?
We've had good participation. I think it's hard for people to get there in time, so they kind of trickle in, and by the time it's like ten minutes to six, we usually have about twenty people who want the food. They actually told us what they would like to learn about. So, last time, we, the dietetic intern that was working with me did a lesson on fiber and salads, and teaching them about the darker green salads and how much more fiber they had than the lighter lettuces. And they have also said that they want to learn more about vegetarian burritos. I'm not sure what they want to learn about that, but that's probably what our next lesson will be about. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Katie and Terry. I appreciate all your work.
All right.
We're going to flip transportation, if it's okay with the board.
I have a question, board members. If you would agree, we would like to flip E-2 and E-1 so that we have transportation first and then the budget.
I think it's been kind of fun to see them squirm in the background.
Yeah, they have to get up at like four-thirty.
Do we need a motion?
Okay, so, transportation?
So, the board has seen the presentation, which is great. And thank you for the level of detail, Gabe and Dave and Steve, that you put into the presentation. I know the board has had a lot of questions about transportation, so we thought that it would be great to have you come and give some information.
And Dave was able to get some very nice copies from the county of maps, both the official district boundaries and some of the order maps that we've been working off of. They're not directly permanent to where we're in right now, but if anyone wants to take them for later, they're there. The order maps are maybe giving you an idea of what we've been working off of and talking about trans tracks, what we're actually transferring over to and stuff.
Yeah, and the maps from the county, this is per the county assessor's office. These, these maps are what the state of California approves and says this is UCAU Unified District Boundaries, as far as the exterior.
Okay, here we go again. So, I'm going to tackle the rolling stock, the hardware, and then I'm going to give, Dave's going to take over the much more complex portion, which is the routes, the human element, and actually how it all pulls together. Okay, so I wanted to give a rough overview of what our numbers were. Thirty-four buses, twenty-six staff, and on a larger budget. You might notice, if you were being very sharp, that the actual detailed numbers don't match up to that large number on top.
Oh, we're sharp.
Yeah, I know you are. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, the difference is, and it says in the bottom, "Costs are defrayed by services to other departments." So, that's food service uses fuel, mechanics and labor, and parts for keeping up other vehicles, my Akima vehicles is another one. Okay, this is the meat of it. On the, the rolling stock side of it, the, right now, we don't have a strict policy or any kind of guideline on how long we keep buses around. There's quite a bit of research out there by the federal government and by a couple states as to what is the sweet spot for buses. In California, school districts go anywhere from about twenty years to seven years. San Diego Unified does seven years. They find that's the sweet spot for, they buy a bus, they run it for seven years before it gets too old, and they can actually sell it, recoup. I don't, we, for our purposes, I think that's way above what we can, what we want to manage. But NASDPT, which is basically the National Board of Transportation Directors, compiled a bunch of studies, and what they came up with was a fifteen-two-fifty. So, that's fifteen years for a type-D bus, those are the big diesels, and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles. For us, given the amount of mileage we put on the buses, the, the sweet spot probably is going to be the, they're going to age out instead of a mile out. So, this is our current rolling stock for the, for the Ds. And the kind of green arrow is our target fleet size. I explained that a little bit later, but we're recommending about twenty-two buses. Right now, we're running sixteen. Or the ideal would be to run sixteen based on our current schedule. That's without any of these, any other potential increases. And that's sixteen up and six in the bays waiting. And there's two reasons why we have that six. One is normal service. You have a bus, bus needs to be serviced, and they have very stringent service guidelines. While that bus is down, you have to have other buses running, taking their place. You also have the possibility of buses going down. You need to have a backup to go out there, pick up the kids. Monday, I think we had three buses at one time.
I was one of them.
Yeah, so three buses going down. So, it's not without reason to have quite a, quite a large amount. The older your fleet, the more often you're going to have that happen. And then, we also want to have buses on standby for field trips. So, we want to have that extra capacity. So, twenty-two is our sweet spot. Right now, we are four over that. We have those Crowns that you all know about. Those are the ones that are going to age out in 2018. They're, they're partly for potential grants, to be able to capture some grants through them. But long-term, I think we need to downsize, need to go down to twenty-two. The ideal being having our sixteen service buses be within that two-fifty, fifteen envelope. And that's what that red line is. That's our benchmark. So, if you can, you can kind of look at that and get a visual of what our fleet looks like right now. Our two-oh-four and up Bluebirds are in pretty decent shape, but the nineteen-ninety-eights and the Thomases are past their prime. They're past where they probably should be.
I guess I'm not following this at all. I don't understand anything about this. What is, I thought it was just me. So, what is the red line?
The red line is the benchmark. So, the top-
Benchmark for who? Like, the national benchmark?
Well, there is no national benchmark. North, the only state, the only entity I know of that actually mandates it or has a hard line is South Carolina, which was one of the states that did this, did a study. They're actually, the closest I could find, we're the closest to them. They run their buses on average about sixteen thousand miles a year, and that's about spot-on what UCAU Unified does. What they came up with was, they, they recommend running the buses up to fifteen years. So, a bus would be fifteen years old, or it would be, or it would get to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles. And at that point, the financially viable thing to do, or the fiscally sound thing to do, is then to replace that bus.
So, they're saying get rid of your bus when it hits the red line?
Buy a new one after you get the red line. Yeah.
And so, we're saying, well, our two-fifteen Bluebirds are nowhere close, but our Thomases?
Yeah, our two-thousand-four, the yellow, the one in yellow, the Bluebird in yellow, those are our two-thousand fours. Those are right at that line in mileage. They're under that line in, in years.
And the nineteen-ninety-one Crowns, we've gotten a lot of use out.
Yes, the Thomases.
And then, what's the green arrow?
The green arrow is our target fleet size. So, we, I was trying to give you a couple different visual references here. The, the green arrow is the target fleet size. So, we can, we're recommending tearing down our fleet by four vehicles. Now, the reason why we're keeping those Crowns, again, they're not running. They, they don't actually go out on the road. They're there for a grant at this point. That's in our, in our current operational model. They're really not doing us anything. The Thomases, some of them are daily, some of them are sitting there. And again, they're sitting there. That doesn't mean we don't need them because there's times where our brand-new buses are sitting, being worked on by the mechanics, and we have to have a backup bus. There are sub-buses. We have sub-drivers. We also have sub-buses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? So, those are type-Ds. The type-As are the smaller buses. They're the sped buses, the wheelchair buses. And as you can see, they're actually in worse shape than the, the big buses. These are, for the most part, gasoline-powered. In fact, all the new ones we are getting are gas. Now, Steve tells me, and I trust him implicitly, that the newer gas models, you can get more out of than you could historically, but we probably, most of us are aware of that diesels last longer. Again, the, the national consensus is a ten-one-fifty on these. So, tentatively, we would like, we would recommend adopting that. Again, we're not saying that all the buses we keep should be within that threshold.
Ten years, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles.
Acronyms, right? Thank you. Okay, so, we're not, we're not saying that every single bus that we're keeping in the fleet should be within that, that threshold. They should be our daily operation buses. So, for the type-As, that's five, we're running five buses right now. So, we would say, keep five buses at or under that red line, and two of them, our two best buses over that line would be our backup buses. So, that was our yellow fleet or our buses. Our white fleet is, it's, it's in similar condition. We haven't had, to my knowledge, a replacement plan, a comprehensive plan in place. We have vehicles from the seventies and on up. Steve did a little survey and came up with the fact that over half of our fleet is nineteen-ninety or older. And again, the older your vehicle, the more costly it is to maintain, both in parts and maintenance, but also in fuel. There's some interesting stats, stats under operational costs. One of our nineteen-eighty-seven F-two-fifties is about seven miles per gallon. The newer, newer vehicles or modern vehicles run about fifteen. So, if you pencil that out, there's a cost savings there. There's also an operational factor, whereas if you're having vehicles that are repeatedly going down, you're not getting the job done. You have people sitting around, getting their vehicles picked up and not getting the work done. So, there's, there's a soft cost there as well. One other thing I'd like to point out on this slide is, we also have a, one of our large dump truck, which will also be hit by the two thousand eighteen regulations. And that's a vehicle that we use to pull some of our heavy equipment around for maintaining the fields. So, we need to be thinking about that. This is my recommendations, which kind of recaps a lot of what I just talked about. We, we recommend this. I don't think there's any hard rule here. The bus isn't going to blow up when it hits two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles. We have quite a few buses out there that have hit four-hundred-thousand miles, and it's really due to the mechanics, their diligence, and their awesome service schedules. But again, I think there's a cost factor there that we need to be mindful of. I, one caveat, I haven't dug into the reports that the, the detailed reports that this overall report talked about. If you would like me to do that, I can, I can dig in and probably get you some harder numbers. They're actual, they're hard numbers. But anecdotally, all of the large school districts in California that I've talked to and know about have something similar to this. You know, LA Unified, they don't have, they don't have buses from the seventies. They don't run buses that are four-hundred-thousand miles because it's not cost-effective, so.
Good evening once again. So, yes, in the wonderful world of transportation, and now we're going to just briefly touch on routes. There is a, really a ton that goes into this. Fortunately, or unfortunately for me, a lot of this, I actually do have in my head, and that's just part of the game. When it comes to routes, we have several factors that are involved when it comes to routing the buses. Some are maybe foreseen, some may not. Either way, what usually appears to be a simple change sometimes ends up being a lot more complex and involved than what we thought. Bell schedules, for example, you have no change, great. We keep existing routes. You do have change of start and end times regardless of where it occurs. Then, you're rewriting ninety-two, one-hundred percent of the existing routes simply because you don't have, for example, one bus that services one school site. Our buses service all of our school sites. Staffing and capacity, one thing we ran into at the beginning of the school year was just that, that one thing was staffing. We were short drivers. I'm happy to report, we do have a couple drivers coming back earlier than expected. That is a good thing. I don't mind the yellow. However, I have been driving this school year probably just as much as I did when I was just a school bus driver. So, it's, yeah, it's been, been interesting. So, yes, do we have enough employees? There's things that come up that are above and beyond anybody's control. DMV is a big one. If you're not in compliance with your medical or anything that goes to your commercial license or your school bus certificate, the DMV says, "Oh, sorry, you're done." You know, you can appeal certain processes. They just, they basically can do what they choose based on the information they have. So, as a driver, you're kind of at their mercy at certain times.
I don't understand how that's beyond one's control.
Well, for example, your medical's good for every two years. Okay, when you're in good health. If you have blood pressure problems, for example, that can put you down to a year for your medical. If that medical's expired, you basically cannot operate a commercial vehicle, let alone a school bus.
Getting recertified before it expired is completely within your control.
Is completely, and that's why I schedule all my employees' appointments. So, it gets done ahead of time.
You probably feel like their parent, but at least it gets done.
You know what? It gets done. DMV sends you a notice, part of when we get into TransTrax, which is our new routing software, that will also notify the drivers via text. I mean, it's, they don't have an excuse not to go to the doctor, especially when the district pays for it. And yes, I make their appointments for them. There are, but there are things that come up where if you go to a doctor, for example, and you say you're feeling dizzy all of a sudden, okay, you've been in perfect health. The doctor is bound by law, knowing that you're a commercial driver, to report to DMV what he or she finds. We had this happen. The driver lost, you know, no, the driver just couldn't, you know, couldn't drive. We have that driver back now. So, things turned around. Things are good. But that is an example of exactly what can happen that is above and beyond, you know, one's control. So, life does happen. Another thing, do we have enough substitutes? Right now, no. I am number one sub. I do have a gentleman that is driving for us as a substitute driver that has been driving every day. He verbally gave me five years. What that means is, he says, "Dave, I like this. Thank you for training me. I will stick around and give you five years of service," and I'm very, very grateful for that. Vehicle availability and capacity, do we have an adequate fleet to handle the needs of the students? That answer right now is yes. Do we have adequate sped vehicles in addition to regular-ed vehicles? Right now, the answer is yes. As we've seen, our fleet is aging. However, as Beth pointed out earlier, there is, and you will see some more numbers, yes, we have a rise of special needs students and regular-ed students this district. And I've talked to these parents that have moved into this area. The parents like UCAU Unified because of what UCAU Unified offers their kids. A lot of these special needs students have more problems, such as autism, is being- Um, a lot of these special needs students have more problems, such as autism, is being, you know, people are more aware of it now. Um, we have two autistic, uh, classes running, one at Nakomas and one at Eagle Peak. Um, we have routes that, we call them the A-Team. That's what we nicknamed Eagle Peak, and now I, Nakomas, okay, A-Team number two. However, we run routes and we pick, uh, these kids up and we take them to school. Uh, we take CBI, the Community Business Interface. I, I'm not sure on that acronym, however, um, we take these kids to businesses or, uh, to the radio station, wherever, so they can go out and, uh, be in the community and we take them back to school. Um, so ridership, um, as I mentioned, yeah, our population seems to fluctuate, and that does, uh, directly affect the number of our passengers, obviously. Um, we will, you know, will we have more or fewer students attending our schools in the upcoming school year? What will our student overflow situation look like?
Can we ask a question?
Yes, you may, please.
I just wasn't sure when to ask, but I know I'm gonna forget all these. Are we doing the same thing with substitutes that we had talked about with other, um, things? Making them qualify for benefits by being enough? Are all of our drivers and our substitute drivers, they're all entitled, okay? And then there was the other thing where in some districts, they have you- Not substitutes. Okay.
All of, yes.
And then some districts have used, have guaranteed a person a position, and they act as a different position when they're not needed to drive.
Right, and that's what, uh, we have, yeah, they have created a utility, uh, driver slash warehouse, yes.
What a great name.
Yes.
It's like baseball.
And it is a six-hour, uh, per day, uh, position. And, um, once that position gets filled, yes, I will have another driver available. And of course, the warehouse, um, will have another person available as well.
And we're trying, are we trying for two? So that you can really-
I wanna see, honestly, I would like to see how this one works.
See what one works, okay.
The, the sub that we have right now, um, he is a CalPERS retiree already. So he cannot work more than nine hundred and sixty hours in a fiscal year. And he cannot accept a contract because that's permanent work.
Right.
He wanted a contract. He, however, yeah, the poor guy couldn't.
And then my other question is, when we're taking a child, a student, to a workplace for job experience or whatever, why do we do that? Why wouldn't we call Uber and, and have the Uber woman come and take him? Is it a liability issue?
It's a school-sponsored function, yeah. It is, it's-
It's in their ID.
Yes, and, and it's a school-sponsored activity trip. Yeah, and if it's a school-sponsored activity trip, you have to be really careful on who hauls, who hauls your students.
Yeah, and what, can they go in a small thing at least? Or in a car or in a van?
Um-
Or can they take them in a huge?
Well, they may, however, it, you know, we did a trip to the pumpkin patch, for example.
Uh-huh.
I had, and I did that trip, I had thirty passengers. So when you-
No, I meant the, yeah.
Right, but even with the CBI, you, a lot of these kids have paras that have to be with them.
Okay.
So you're over capacity.
Okay, thank you.
But I do use the smaller vehicles when I can.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, overflow. Um, overflow's a very interesting thing. I first became aware of it, um, basically when I came into the office scene. And over, you know, there's different, different reasons for overflow students. Um, basically, an overflow student resides in an area of attendance other than that of the school in which they are enrolled. Um, overflow can result, you know, from a voluntary decision by a student's family or because the appropriate in-area school is beyond capacity. Specifically, that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. Um, I get, you know, calls from Nicole and from school sites on a regular basis, trying to place kids. And I, somehow, we seem to come up, you know, I get together as a team with my drivers, hey, what can we do? How, how can we make this happen for this student? And, uh, nine and a half times out of ten, hey, no, we, we do make it happen. It, but it is, uh, it is difficult, um, at times. Um, either cases, you know, overflow can cause significant challenges for busing. In extreme cases, a single overflow student can increase a single route by as much as an hour. Let me give you an example of what happened this school year. Uh, we had a young man come into our district, um, he lived at twenty-two-hundred, or he lived at the south end of town. The only opening for this young man was at Calpella. Okay, doesn't sound like that big of a deal, but here's the problem. Um, with all the school sites starting at relatively the same time, uh, we don't bring buses into a school site, drop, and then send them out on another run. Everything happens at once. My only option, um, and this was very hard for me to swallow, was a six-thirty-five to six-forty pickup time. That is the only available vehicle that we have in our fleet with a driver to get that student to school on time. The other option was to get that student to school after nine o'clock in the morning, when we had vehicles available. So that is a worst-case scenario, however, it happened.
So in that case, did he, did the bus driver go and pick up one child?
Uh, before that bus driver started its regular Calpella route at the north end of town, yes, that bus driver then went to the south end of town, picked up that one child, because there are certain strings attached with certain situations where we are mandated to haul them. And that's what we had to do.
We probably don't have time tonight because it's twenty to ten, but could we put a placeholder for that? I, I have many questions about that.
Okay.
Is this a union issue? Why did we overflow him to Calpella? Are there other solutions? I just wanna call Uber, I understand I'm not allowed to. Um, but can we just do that at another time?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, just, yeah, whatever, whatever works. I do, I do have numbers, um, based on what we keep track of in-house for where these kids are being hauled to, from what area to what area. Um, sometimes siblings, uh, our most recent one is, we have some siblings that were, that were broken up. Um, they live out, uh, out in Talmadge area, and one goes to one school and the other one goes to another school. So it's, it's unfortunate, but yeah, there are, there are reasons why. Yeah.
We have a lot of anecdotal evidence, I mean, there's another one of a family that lives up in Willis, and they drive, um, drop off at, at a known bus stop and their kids bus in from there. But the problem is, I think as a district, a lot of what we have is anecdotal. We haven't had a system that ties it all together, and that's what we're hoping this is. So this, this picture you see up here, and I think there was a little bit of confusion, this is TransTrax. This is a, a module of TransTrax, which isn't a database. Um, ARI's, our student information system, is the database. This is a filter or a tool that allows us to, um, massage the data and actually see the data. So those are district boundaries that Dave's put in, that we need to define them a little bit. But what this will allow us to do is actually input, import our entire student database, see where those students lie, and then export it back out to ARI's. Um, the, the boundaries are hard to define. I mean, if it's, if it's someone who's looking at a, a description of different boundaries, you know, this street here, North Highway, you can't accurately place a student very easily. This does it automatically. All we have to do is build this, it gets exported in, it, it gets exported back. All of a sudden, we have the capacity to find where every student is, the school they go to, where they live, and if they are or not overflow. Then we have to, then we just have to figure out why they're overflowing. That's, there's a, that's, that's another component to it. But this is, this map right here is Pomleda Eagle Peak. Um, the red pins at Pomleda, as you can see, they're well into the Eagle Peak, and you even, and you have Eagle Peak south of that. So that's just our middle schools, that's not even our elementary schools. So, we don't have that, we don't have that information for you right now, but I think we can get there. And I think we have a very good shot of having, of being able to find a good answer, or at least, um, have the, the information to make a, a good answer, um, going into the summer.
Can, can I ask a question?
When did you say? Oh, I couldn't hear your last part.
Uh, at, at, at least by the end of the school year. All right, this is, this is a, it's a complex system, we need to get it right. We need to make sure we get the map right, and we need to be able to, to, um, build the system that, that interfaces with ARI's well. I mean, it's really, it's, it's exporting the spreadsheet over to it, but we need to do it right. Otherwise, my wife says, garbage in, garbage out. So if we, if we feed the wrong information to the student information system, we'll have, we won't have the correct data that we need, that you need to, to make an informed decision. So I, I don't think, in my opinion, right, you know, it's not a making a decision right now on this. It's getting, it's making a decision to get us to the right place where we can make that decision, having all the data we need to do. And Dave's making huge strides with that, with this system. Um, but it is, it's in its early days of its inception. We've only had it for, I believe, three months now, and he's been on the bus for at least half of that time.
And just to clarify, we have two groups of kids, well, more than two groups of kids, but when we talk about overflow, we're talking about the kids who are involuntarily transferred to another school site. Um, and then what we're digging into right now is our policy, when parents choose to go to a different school, we haven't transferred them there. Um, we are not, our policy states that we're not, um, to provide transportation. It would be a parent's job to provide the transportation. Um, we are providing some transportation, we don't know how widespread it is. Um, but we have to look into that, and then as soon as we can, early, communicate with families about, um, that change. Because if they've been transported for the last few years, um, and we're not going to do that next year because that's what our policy states, and it probably is adding, uh, cost, um, then we need to communicate it very soon. So if parents can't transport their kids to their school of choice, they're, that all, um, you know, leads into staffing decisions and everything else at school sites, so.
Okay, um, Megan, Dan, Dan?
I, um, one quick question and then a maybe slightly larger comment, but this, this purple is Eagle Peak?
That purple area is Eagle Peak.
Are you picking somebody up way out of North Springs, or is that?
That parent brings that child in.
Okay, I just, wow.
Those, those pins aren't necessarily students that are being bused, those are the actual students that go to that school.
So, so I think, I, I, um, this is the topic, I'm trying to think if it's the most, and it is. As a board member, I feel like I have no idea what you're ever talking about. So it's like the part I feel the least confident in in understanding anything. But in my simplified view, I would think you set a bus route based on the attendance areas. So-
Correct.
So you're, you're, you set the bus route in the beginning of the year based on getting children to their school of attendance.
Correct.
So we're assuming that some children are showing up at your bus stop that are not technically supposed to be going to that school.
Absolutely correct.
But if you have room on your bus, why not let them on your bus?
Or here's the, here's a good example. I pull up to, um, a school site that we use as a bus stop, there are twenty passengers. I don't know who's who. So-
But if you have room on your bus, you don't really care.
If we have room on the bus, our job's to get them to school, correct.
So why would be, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure why we would be kicking out the voluntary transfer people if you've set the routes anyway, based on attendance area. So why are we kicking them out?
Well, you get to a, you get-
We would need to revisit our policy, because our current policy says that if a family chooses to go to a different school other than their attendance area, we are not to provide transportation.
But if it, if, if the bus has room?
But it doesn't always have room.
Correct.
Yeah.
So when they don't have room, we are-
Create more to transport all the kids who show up.
Yeah.
Routes follow capacity, so if your route is getting to capacity, you have to split it and make a new route.
But you start out at the beginning of the year not really knowing what your capacity's gonna be, right?
This is a multi-year problem. Think of it, this is a Hydra, it's, you know, it's slowly grown out and grown out and grown out.
Based on last year's experience.
And we don't know-
Yes.
It, it's sad to say, but we don't know how big the problem is, because we don't know who we're busing. I mean, we know that there are, there were, there are UUSD skid kids, but other than the sped, we don't know which, you know, we don't, can't look at a site and say, this child and this child and this child are taking a bus and these ones aren't. Um, and that's maybe something we, we need to look at. Um, I know a solution a lot of other school districts have taken is, is doing bus passes.
So when you, you mentioned that, the bus pass says where, where you belong.
There's a couple of different types of-
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's, uh, several different options.
So you'd be like, hey, you have an Eagle Peak pass, you can't get on my bus, type of thing.
Correct. Um, there's-
So right now, if Zoe was to drop her kid off at the bus stop, it would bring her, the kid to Grace Hudson?
Yeah, yes, yes, I would, Zoe, because I, well, I, I mean-
But I mean, because you wouldn't know.
Yes, we-
You wouldn't know, and it's going that direction.
E- exactly, and it's, you know, and then you have people that just learn, okay, I can-
Just show up at the bus stop.
I can just show up here, hey, there's a big yellow taxi. Yeah.
I mean, this is definitely a new phenomenon, because when I was teaching, I knew where every single, everybody had to have, uh, identification. You had, you had three lists, nobody got on a bus that didn't belong on a bus because you wanted to be sure that a parent was there when they got off the bus.
Off the bus, you are correct.
So this is, oh, and, you know, just to comment, Megan, if you, once you start providing that, then you wind up having kids-
Yeah.
Forcing other kids out of their attendance area school.
No, I see that's an issue, I just-
But Gail, just to clarify, we, our elementary schools absolutely still have lists. The teachers have lists of who's going, whose parent is picked, are they a parent pickup, are they a bus? That still exists.
Yeah, and that's-
If one child could get on the bus, that wasn't in the attendance area, because the bus didn't go to where they live.
Exactly.
Coming to school.
Yeah, but that's exactly, Zoe, coming to school, you don't know.
And if a parent drops them off at the bus stop, you'd be dropping them off at a legitimate bus stop.
Correct.
Trustee Ark-
Sorry.
You know, I don't remember when that happened, because you, I remember when you used to bring Sasha in, you, there was no bus to bring Sasha in.
No, we drove her back and forth.
Yeah, and, uh, so I don't know when it happened. All I could think of is when Eagle Peak became Eagle Peak, and we started busing them, uh, meeting over at, uh, Frank Zeke, then all of a sudden, they started busing, maybe that was when that happened. But, uh, I think it, it is important for us to, uh-
Yeah, and, and one nice thing about areas that Gabe and I have talked about, and he is, you know, he has, uh, educated me on, is that these components exist to designate, okay, this student is a bus passenger. So for example, at the elementary level, great, we have lists of who ride the bus. That is something that we can import, and that can be put in there, therefore generating a bus pass if necessary. Um, but even from the route sheets that this program can generate, it's very specific. Um, bus stops, I can have a list of students, who's at this bus stop, who's supposed to be there. Well, what's this student look like? They can have a picture. Yes, it's very, very comprehensive, but once again, it's still in its infant stage, and we're just still putting in the data. That's why these maps came about. I called the county's assessor's office this morning, hey, what exactly is our outer boundary? Oh, not a problem, this is what the state of California says is your boundary, here you go. He emailed it to me within ten minutes. So now I, now I have that, pardon me?
Go Leaf.
Exactly. And Leaf also remembers when this, uh, the boundaries were visited several years ago, or in the early two thousands, and then it just kinda fizzled out. Well, okay, great, it's brought back to life, and we're going to finish it, and we're gonna have accurate, uh, boundaries and accurate numbers.
So just quickly, uh, so these Lake County guys, they just bring them in?
They, they just bring them in, but I will give you one example of a Lake County family who I thought lived here the whole time, because I've been hauling their kids since I've been driving.
Well, they just leave them at the bus stop, like the Willis family?
No, the, the bus stop is, uh, their place of work. It's been a bus stop for thirty years. And, um, there's also part of district policy, if I'm not mistaken, that if a parent works in a specific, uh, area of attendance, that their child can go to school in that area of school. Um, so come to find out, yeah, there's three of them, um, uh, Calpella, Eagle Peak, and UKIA High. Well, UKIA High, okay, that's everywhere, I get it. But at the same time, you know, you have these kids going to these schools, and you have a full school site. Let's use Yocao for example. You have a fourth grader that moves in directly across the street from that school, there's not a seat. That's, exactly, that's a problem. Where do we take them? And how do we get them there on time? So, yes, I understand this, there is a lot of information, and it is confusing. However, you know, I'll, I will always do my best to have it make sense for, for all of you, for Gabe, uh, for everybody. Just, you know, this is what we're doing, and this is the reality of what we are facing today.
And again, I think as a district, we, combined, we have the information we need. We just don't have a cohesive way to tie it together, and I think this is one of the pieces of the puzzle, so.
That's what you're working on.
Trustee Van Sant, did you have something?
I'm, I'm just concerned that when you say the end of the school year, it's like, I mean, I, do we wanna wait until then to visit the board policy? Or do we want to think about it and say, let parents know ahead of time that they will not be provided with transportation?
I, I think we can get-
This is a lot of ramifications.
I, I understand, I think we can get something before that, but I also know that our primary task right now is getting the kids to school today, and I don't wanna promise something that we can't deliver, so.
We can internally talk about this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, because if we're gonna make a change, we need to make that by when?
January or February.
Oh, that's soon.
Yeah.
Well, if we're going to communicate any changes in practice, um, then we need to do it very soon so that parents can make decisions.
Oh, okay.
Because if you can't get your child to a particular school that you're choosing to go to- to go to, you might need to go back to your neighborhood school.
I know.
So, can I?
I really miss that.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna prolong this, but so, so I would say, every couple months, an issue comes up that touches on, are we gonna continue with our lawless practice or not? So I feel like as a board, are we gonna deal with this or not? We should make a decision. I mean, are we going to actually, because it's not just the bus transportation, it's the kid who moves next door to Yokeo, and, and whatever, the busing might not be an issue for that kid, but the kid can't go to the school there. So it's not, the busing is just one of these issues. And I think that we keep bringing this up as a board, I mean, like, eh, we don't really wanna talk about it. So, do we wanna talk about this issue or not? I don't mean right now, but if we're actually gonna make changes in, like, enforcing enrollment, we're gonna have to schedule that, it's gonna be like a really long discussion, it's gonna take us forever, and it's gonna take us several years to actually implement. So do we even wanna start, because that's my.
Oh, my goodness.
We, I, we just keep dancing around whether we actually wanna address this. We have, we don't wanna. I don't really think we wanna either, personally.
You mean, you don't want to address the transportation issue, or you don't want to address the?
The boundary.
I think, I think they're tied together. I think, because as you pointed out, you just start changing the bus policy, then it's gonna start changing.
It's not changing the bus policy. No, it's not. I disagree.
Megan, the policy is clear, in that we should, the policy states.
Right, we see the force policy.
Right, correct. We do need to enforce the policy.
So you think we can talk about enforcing the bus policy separate from whether or not your kid gets to go there?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Really? Why, you all think that?
Because you, as I did, you drive your kid to the school?
Yeah.
You drive your kids to school?
It's open enrollment, you can take your kid to any school, as long as you do the transportation.
So, so we don't, we don't actually have an open enrollment policy either, we just don't enforce that policy? That's a.
We do have the open enrollment, we have the open access.
Do we have an open enrollment policy?
Yes, we do.
But, but students who, it includes students living in, in their district, having the first priority at that school.
But not the, not the fourth grader who moved across from Yokeo?
That's, because we, that's supposed to be built in to the policy.
Because, Megan, if they move partway through the school year and the school is full, then they would have to go to a different school. However, the next year, when there is space, they could go back to Yokeo.
Okay, so I've been under the, the wrong impression that we've not been following our enrollment policies. You're telling me we have been following enrollment policies, we have just not been following our busing policies?
Correct.
All right, wrong about everything. Go, carry on.
No, only half, only half.
And that, that's part of this information gathering, so we can say, hey, now we know.
Yeah, we know. Good.
So Dave, can you maybe move to, and the board has seen this presentation, so I'm thinking, and there, I might be wrong, so you can tell me I'm wrong, but I'm thinking getting back toward the slide where it talks about how many routes are ideal, the almost very last one. You've talked about trans tracks, we're super excited about it, and we think it's going to make some good changes, the software system for transportation, but.
Can we jump up real quick? I just wanted to touch on the, the slide directly before this. I know everyone's seen this, but I just wanted to point out.
Yes, this is a good one.
One of the, the really important ones is, is, the, the upper one isn't as big, it doesn't look like, it's not that large of a shift for us, but the lower one, the sped routes, if you look at those numbers, you see that there's almost a, a 50% increase of 1415 to 1516 with the sped ridership, and that's one of the key influences for why we recommended getting two new Bluebirds, two of the smaller Bluebirds this year. And thank you so much for that, because it was a, it's a godsend having this in New York.
Yes, it is. In fact, I sent one on a field trip to Boonville this past Saturday.
Oh, good.
Yes.
And that trend has continued, we don't have this year's data on there, but it's continued this year, so.
So I have one question, real quick. Trustee, uh, what, the problem I have is the schedule of the high school, Pomalita, and I think Frank Zeke, all starting at the same time.
We're gonna fix that next year.
That's what, that's all I wanna know is, are we working on that?
And we're gonna start talking about, we haven't talked about this yet, so I'm just, I'm gonna tell you now.
What?
We're gonna start working on trying to fix that problem in January and February.
We have an awesome tool to help us with that.
Yes.
When it is fixed, could you let us know?
No, she will tell us.
Well, I, I actually wanna know before it's fixed, and that might feel like, like micromanaging from the board, but I recall this board specifically saying, do not start the high school at 8:15. And that's exactly what happened.
I don't remember.
And we looked back in the minutes for that, and we couldn't find it, but.
I couldn't find, yeah.
Well, it might not have been written down. Doesn't mean we didn't make it pretty clear.
I don't remember.
Anyway.
Anyway, so you're, you're working on that, so that there won't be.
We're going to talk about how to stagger the times around that area for next year, yes.
That area, okay, and did we get any feedback from the guys from the county?
Yes, I've gotten more than I cared to share.
Yeah.
And you're hiding?
And I think they need to give up their private parking lot and make another egress and ingress. And, you know, I grew up in New York, only in California do you think you get to park within two feet of where you work. Really, people, get a life.
Okay.
Dave and I will kindly stay away from that issue.
Yeah, yeah, and last slide, just, you know, another comparison. This time, you know, we have some mileage on there, and these records come from what's known as the J141, which is a requirement of the state of California that we fill out and turn in with mileage per bus from beginning of fiscal year to end of fiscal year, we also have to provide that to the CHP. So I had, went back and found records from 1213 school year, you know, averaged 1,545 students, 20 routes, let's see, okay, 17 big buses, three sped buses, four, there was our mileage, 258,000, you notice it jumped up, you know, the 1314 year, the, the numbers were close, however, the routes did change a little bit, but you look at the three sped buses one year to four the following year, there's, you know, change in the needs of the students, so we adjust accordingly. 1415 school year, averaged transporting 1,420 students, 22 total routes, 15 large buses, seven of the, we call them vans, 388,000 miles, and then on up to where we're at right now, basically, we're, you know, 21 routes are ideal, 19 filled, 14 of those are large buses, and five of those are smaller buses. So we do put on some mileage, and we do, we do get around.
Two, two points on this that are of interest, the 1415 for 1617 school year, that's 14 large buses, five sped buses. I had said 16 is our ideal, that difference of two buses, those are the two drivers that we can't, we don't have filled yet. So that utility driver is even outside of that, so that would be, that's three positions right now that, that are unallocated or unfilled.
So where are we in the process of filling those two positions?
We're looking good.
Yeah?
Yes, we have come up with the, the test questions, that's all done, for the utility position, for the personnel.
But the utility is the substitute, I'm talking about the two regulars.
The two regular, yes.
And didn't you say we had another one on the way?
Yes, we have one that's, will be testing with CHP, I would say, within the next two and a half weeks.
And the largest impact of that, and also with the returning driver, is Dave tells me, and it's great news that it looks like we can start doing more field trips, which I think all of us are happy about. The other, the other question I had for Dave is, I'm seeing this huge fluctuation between large buses and small buses year to year, and I asked him why, and his response was location. It's not just real estate, it's also a ridership, especially with the sped buses, having a child being bused from Hoplin or wherever makes huge difference out at the end of Tom Kai, that's, that's a, a difference of a route too. So it's not just the, the amount of students is where they're going.
And yeah.
We don't have any control.
And that's a more specialized curb-to-curb service, if you will.
So, so the specialized are, are home?
Yeah.
Yes.
Pick them up, they're home.
Yes, yes, we do. Real quick to beat this thing just a little bit more, just some quick num, no, just some quick numbers, just to give you guys an idea of what's going on when we're talking overflow. We were able to put this together literally today at the end of the day. Oak Manor area, kids going to Nakomas, we have one. Nakomas area of attendance, kids going to Oak Manor, 50 plus. Yokeo area kids to Frank Zeke, four, over four. Yokeo area kids to Oak Manor, over three. Frank Zeke area to Oak Manor, one. Yokeo area to Nakomas School, three. Frank Zeke area to Yokeo, two. Calpella to Oak Manor area, one. What has happened is there have, some seats have opened up, and some of these kids, for example, have been able to get into their area of attendance school, which is great. So that is a positive thing. However, those are just numbers off of what we note on a route sheet, where we have a stop and we say overflow. So that's, that's just basically what's, what's going on right now with, with the numbers that we have currently.
That we know about.
That we know about.
Okay, some questions.
Oh, another question. I apologize to everybody, even myself. Sports busing?
Yes.
What's going on? Are the two additional drivers gonna change that?
That will completely change the dynamics of that. You have a couple things going on. Keep in mind, sports trips are the classified bus drivers, extra money. However, if I do not have a person to put in a bus or in a seat to fill that driver's position when they're out of town on a trip, it can't happen. We have to do the home-to-school, school-to-home first. With the drivers in the pipe that are going to be driving for us, and with the drivers coming back, I am extremely confident, come spring sports, we will be doing our own transportation. Now, the kids haven't been completely left out, we can do out-of-town trips that occur during school hours, which we have been doing. However, anything beyond really 2:30, 3 o'clock, there is no extra coverage for an afternoon run, even with me out there driving. So therefore, the trips that go out till 10 o'clock at night or midnight can't happen. You've got hour restrictions, let alone there is not a person to drive a bus to take care of that route.
So, does that mean that we're, they're not busing them, or you aren't busing them? They're, they're charters?
I had to charter out 43 sports trips.
Which, the, the charter's about three times expensive as us busing, even if we're paying extra time for the drivers.
Yes.
Dave, I just wanna back up on one thing. Dave mentioned time restrictions, and are the, a fast speed driver, a commercial driver, particularly a school bus driver, can only work a certain amount of time in a, in a certain period, and then they have to have to rest time. And that's another one of our limiting factors when we're at capacity and beyond, I mean, we're really stretched to the limit right now, so.
Yeah, to put it into perspective, since I'm driving tomorrow, my route departs at 7:15, therefore, I'm on the clock at 7:00. I turn into a pumpkin tonight at 11 o'clock PM, because I have to have eight consecutive hours off duty, so my 16 duty hours reset. I know that's confusing, but that's the world I live in.
How far away do you live, Dave?
I live out Tom Kai Road.
Well, we better get going.
Yep.
He's off the clock when he walks out.
Yep. But no, thank you, I wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to present this, to give you some insight into what goes on, as, as far as the wheels on the bus. I mean, it's, it's a lot of fun, and I do thank you all for what you have given us. It has made a tremendous difference. Safety-wise, you know, the majority of our school buses now have seat belts, so we're good. We're, we're really good. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
We appreciate you being here and giving us this information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I'm safe.
I love the end, I love the last slide.
Yes, me too.
Brings back such memories.
Penny is.
Bugs Bunny.
So Penny, just a reminder, the board has read all your slides, they got it ahead of time, which is great.
Don't worry. Any questions? No. Darn, that's probably not quite what I can do.
We'll be fine with that.
They'd probably be okay with that.
Are you? I have a kind of lonely question. If I'm gonna go really fast, you guys, slow me down at any point. I, I know you will.
Or another way to do it is just to tell us, what is the one thing you want me to walk out that door knowing?
I can't, I have to look at my slides. I'm sorry, Anne, that was a nice try. I won't bother, the agenda's what you're gonna be seeing, and this is, I, I just like, that, I think it's really important to understand what we're looking at, when we're, when we're looking at this first interim report. We adopted this year's budget in June, and now this is our first official look at budget adjustments of what we know as of October 31st. We take that picture, and so this report is this year's budget as of October 31st. We're gonna talk about the changes from the adopted budget to this first interim. So what happens is, in September, we gave you last year's budget, the final, so now that the books are closed, we've got our actual ending fund balance, any carryover from the last year would get added to site budgets, like the Title I and so forth. Identify changes since originally, yeah, that's what I just said. And then, so what also is always a big, you know, can be a big change, is we estimate so many positions at budget adoption that we hadn't hired yet. So now we know who we've hired, for the most part, and we can be very accurate with what those actual salaries are compared to the estimates we had at, at adoption. The, we, we provide now a multi-year projection based on what we know as of October 31st, and then it's important to, we present this to the county office and certify our financial position. Here's an overview and of the unrestricted general fund, general fund being, you know, the main operational fund of the district, and unrestricted being where most everything happens, other than our very specific restricted programs that have to actually balance revenues to expenses, other than those that have contributions from the general fund that can't support themselves, such as special ed. So here, you guys have seen the numbers, I don't know if we wanna go over all of them. You can see at the bottom, the increase in the reserve. There's a little more simple way to look at, at this in a future slide, so I'm gonna move on. You can see that at budget adoption, the ending fund balance was $1,098,000, and at first interim, we're down to $100,000. Now, I will say, and you guys that have seen budget presentations over the years, first interim is typically a little more conservative, because we don't have much of the year to look at yet. Now, we can tighten up more at second interim, because we've had more of the year to see how expenses are going, and any savings, you know, that we can capture, we would wanna do later in the year. Oh, wow, that wasn't good. There we go. Is that the next one? Okay, so this is just the LCFF, which is our main source of revenue, $107,000 change, and that's basically because we added 17 ADA. Now, we up, are up more than that in enrollment, but as you may recall, last year, we overprojected Now, we up, are up more than that in enrollment, but as you may recall, last year, we overprojected an increase in ADA and we don't want to do that anymore. So Katie and I, I, I need to thank Katie, I mean, the fiscal department, I'm telling you, they do terrific work under her direction and she's just the best. But we determined we would take that five-year average on the ADA, P2 to ADA and then take 99% of that. So that, that's what we've done to try to make sure we don't over-project additional ADA. And then we'll be tighter, you know, once second interim rolls around. Of that, I always break out 92,000 more in base grant and then the 14,000 more in supplemental concentration. Unrestricted revenue, just there's the 107, a little bit in federal, ImpactAid, MA, a little bit, you know, just little amounts here. Young parent gets a one-time from 15, 16 of 20,000, you know, just 326,000, not really significant additional revenue.
Are there any children in the young parent program right now?
I don't.
I didn't think there were. I thought there was zero.
No, I'll have to look right now. I know we've been struggling hiring the position.
Yeah.
Okay. So that may be something that would roll over if it's not used. Unrestricted expenditure changes. Now, at budget adoption, we typically budget with, for a reserve of four certificated positions in case we have, have to create additional classes due to enrollment sizes and our contractual class size limitations. And so we've adjusted that because we've only filled 2.6 of the four, so we've captured those savings. We did hire the two additional classified positions, the utility custodian at the high school and then the utility bus driver. I should have called it the utility bus driver. And so also, in the unrestricted side, we did not have the 1.79% salary increase budgeted. And so that was a substantial change. And that has now been included in the budget. And then we, we have offsetting revenue for the 1.36 one-time money that was part of that agreement from last year. Excuse me. The materials and supplies. You know, there's, there's a lot of different account codes and we, we make the adjustments as needed to make the budget as accurate as possible. These are some of the other details of the 5,000s or our services and other operating expenditures. 120,000 we added from the one-time money for the facility master plan consulting. Let's see. Overall, $716,000 increase in unrestricted, you know, and there, there are a lot of, of costs that make that up. Here is the overall look at the difference from adopted budget to first interim. And as you can see, the contributions went up significantly and the biggest part of that was special education, of which a substantial amount of that was a salary increase, that contribution. But the, and then this is where we see the safety, equipment, furniture, vehicle replacement that we used one-time money for and that you guys were kind enough to approve. And then the transfer outs increased and the 944,000 is that us trying to increase our reserve, which as we can see, we didn't get very far with, but I'll have that amount here. But to-
We got close.
I know. And then we had to increase our cafeteria fund contribution or transfer to that fund, but we're hoping that we'll be making that up because our director is very involved in trying to balance out his budget, but the salary increases are a big hit to him.
Is that why I've been receiving multiple phone calls at my home telling me that my student has a balance?
Well, we, we, well, we're, we're trying to eliminate those charges.
It's $4 to pay online.
So.
That's what I do.
We've been working on that and we have been decreasing the amount outstanding and that's-
It was a very polite message.
Oh, I'm really glad. So here's a review of the one-time funds. I knew that it would not be very, I don't know, it wasn't a, it's not a good thing that we talked just in October about having additional one-time money and now we don't. But, you know, there, there's some of the reasons why. And, you know, the 1.79% salary increase. So you can offset it with what some of the benefits are and hopefully the retention and, you know, better recruitment and employee morale, I would hope, would go a long way toward this. Multi-year projection, this is, I, I broke this up into two slides so that it's a little easier to read. This is just the revenues and expenditures and the overall net increase/decrease, which as you can see, when we get into this, the out two years, we pretty much are just balancing. But here's the bottom line on the multi-year projection. So our, our move to help increase our, our reserve amount, we're at 6.79. So we're going to, Katie and I, yeah, have, yes, we're really pleased with that. We've been trying to, you know, it's a little bit difficult with moving that over because then the amount of transfer becomes part of the required amount. So we thought if we could just work on maintaining the 6.79% this year, instead of that specific dollar amount of 916,000, then that would be an easier accounting way to handle that. And I could probably explain that more if anyone wants to talk to me about it when we have more time.
I don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
But I do want to say that it concerns me that we're not going to be at 9%
Yeah.
Until that long, because there will be a recession before 2018.
Unless we have some unallocated money from next year, of which we'll take half.
So that's why I'd like to-
Yeah. And maybe at second interim, we'll, you know, it'll look, I'm hoping that it'll be tighter. At first interim, it's just never as tight as it will be when we have more of the year to analyze. That's what I'm hoping. Right, Katie? All right. Contingencies. You guys didn't think we would get out that easy. Future events that are possible but cannot be predicted with certainty. Now, there is, it is certain that the minimum wage is going to increase. What's, what we don't know for sure yet, because we haven't done the, the monetary analysis, is how much that's going to cost us. But, and then we also, these are just some really big issues that are out there that we need to be aware of. Impacts of the Affordable Care Act, the sick leave accrual for part-time employees, all of our future facility needs that are tremendous that we know about and some that we may not. Sustainability of our bus fleet that we just talked about. Changes to the early education program that the state's currently developing and I'm really excited. It's December and January, we'll have the look, the first look at the governor's budget proposal for next year. And I expect we'll have some information on early education, which will possibly bring up some facility needs, so stay tuned for that. Other funds, here we are and everything is positive as far as estimating our ending fund balance, which is a wonderful thing. And our reserve fund actually went up the 1.128,000 from the actuals. That's not the difference from the budget that we've been looking at this whole time. Now I've switched to what the actuals were in 15, 16. So not to throw you off, but it's just that, that kind of makes more sense on where were we last year, where do we expect to be this year for the other funds? Okay? So that, that's a little different look. Next steps, the, what I just said on the governor's budget proposal, well, Nicole, we'll be determining staffing needs for 17, 18 and probably finalizing enrollment projection comes first and then the staffing needs. And then second interim, we'll take that same picture, January 31st, and we'll present it to you in March. And, yeah. So we're going to recommend that you approve this first interim report with a positive certification that we can meet this year's expenditure needs and the subsequent two years.
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
No questions?
Get my big question.
All the questions?
Sorry. I'm just, to be, you know, fair to myself. So your report mentioned this paper transfer of our CalPurster's liability and that it influenced our reserve.
It does.
So tell me, tell me where I'm seeing that.
Well, it's, it's in the increased state minimum 3% amount and it's $1.9 million.
So then how, how much, how much money is that?
It's $133,000 additional just for that
Okay.
In our reserve.
But it's not an obligation we actually have?
No, no, not at this time and hopefully it won't in the future. Most school districts will go broke.
Okay.
But it's the state's way of transferring it from their books
Right.
Onto ours.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Ready for the vote?
All in favor of approving the budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
We are so lucky to have you and Katie and Dave. We're just, your reports are super clear and I appreciate you very much.
Yes. I didn't make transportation M L T enough, but yeah, it's been TransTrak. I wanted to let you guys know before TransTrak, which we're just now getting implemented, they did all of this by hand, all of that scheduling, everything by hand. I mean, it's-
And this is the map that they were playing.
Oh, I want one of those. I like them.
Okay. So next we are going to E3.
So that we are asking the board to authorize us to form a 7-11 committee. It's called the 7-11 committee because there are a minimum of seven members, a maximum of 11, to determine possible next steps related to vacant school properties. A 7-11 committee was formed and initiated with school closures prior to my coming here. We will run this process simultaneously with the facilities master plan process. But as we've talked about, at some point, we need to determine what to do with our closed schools. And so this group will look at that more specifically.
All right. I moved at the board direct staff to form a 7-11 committee. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to have this come back with, or some kind of discussion about who the people are.
I think it's, isn't there a list of who has to be on there or?
There's a list of the types of people.
Right.
And this is in the law of the types of people who need to be on. If you have any ideas or recommendations, I would love for you to email me them. That would be awesome.
It doesn't say any board members. Isn't that wonderful?
Are we under an obligation to, when we accept the report, do we have to agree and do anything they say?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Informational.
Their advisory to the board.
Great.
Okay. E4, Nicole.
Yes. I won't read it to you because it's there, but CSBA has sunshine their items for the 2016/17 school year negotiations. I move acceptance of the proposal.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So next we go to the superintendent's report.
No.
Oh, no, we've got to vote on all those.
You just have to get any, any input. This is, they, all these policies, updates are CSBA, from CSBA changes in the law. This is the first reading, so if you have any input on them, we'd love to hear it so we can incorporate it into the approval at the next board meeting.
Okay. So no votes, just suggestions or questions, I guess.
Okay. I think we're safe with the Wildcats.
Oh. Names of teams.
Were you voting on all of them at once?
No, it's just-
Yes.
This is just any input. It will come back.
There's no voting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. So moving along, Superintendent Kubin.
I will put updates in my Friday communication tomorrow, but I will just say, we had a lot of very meaty and difficult issues on tonight's board meeting. They were pretty, it was difficult to push any of them off. I appreciate the board's honesty always and I know it's a really difficult job that you have. And so, sorry to give you so many meaty items in one meeting. It's important to staff to have a forum to be heard, so I appreciate you hearing the issues from the high school.
Okay, board member reports.
I think it's very late. In case anyone- Are you reporting that? In case anyone hasn't noticed, it's very late.
I'm very interested in what everybody learned at CSBA. We're going to, each, each of you is going to give a half an hour on that right now, right?
Not an hour.
No, on the 20th.
December 20th.
Has that been set now?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a great conference. It was.
It really was.
I'm glad you asked.
All right. So we approved the, the consent agenda already. So before we do the expulsions, do any board members have suggestions for future meetings?
What time was the asking meeting?
Oh, I thought we did that when we approved the agenda.
We didn't do student expulsion.
Okay. Okay. Any suggestions for future meetings?
I do, I'm wondering where we're at on communications, the communications plan. I thought the new website was going to be up by September, so I, I don't know if that's a general discussion or if that's just a private discussion.
June, it's, it's going to be up in June.
I wasn't even close.
And we are doing a training next week.
On?
On the software for the website, for the school sites. So we are making very good progress.
Okay. Okay. And the, okay, doesn't matter, it's too late. We're going to talk about it later.
All right. We'll move on to the action for student expulsions and readmissions. Because we need a separate motion for each one. So first of all, we have 011282016 for readmission. Do we have a motion to readmit this student?
I move. So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Student 021282016, a motion for readmittance.
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we have 031282016. Their readmission has been denied and extended one semester. Do I have a motion for that?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
041282016, may I have a motion for readmission?
I so move.
All in favor?
I- Zero- Eating candy.
051282016, a motion to readmit.
I so move.
What are you doing? You're probably speaking to-
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then these are student expulsions. AA1282016, a suspended expulsion. Do I have a motion to suspend their expulsion?
I so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
BB1282016, a motion to expel but suspend the expulsion.
I so move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
CC1-
Is everybody voting? Yeah. I'm not voting. Yes.
CC1282016, a motion to expel but suspend the expulsion.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
DD1282016, a motion to expel but suspend the expulsion.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
EE1282016, a motion to suspend an expulsion.
I so move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we took care of the student expulsions and we need to have a motion to appro, to approve the consent items.
I move approval of the consent items.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. And so then at this point, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Agenda planning?
Oh, agenda planning.
So we are- So we are meeting on the twentieth?
Twentieth and some special meeting at four-thirty.
What time?
Four-thirty.
In, in, in agenda timing for the January meeting, we do, uh, January eleventh at noon?
January eleventh at noon. Who can make that agenda planning meeting?
I can, if no one else wants to.
Uh, I can do that one.
I haven't. Go for it.
Did I hear noon, or four-thirty?
Noon.
Noon.
On January eleventh?
Yes.
Have I not been there for a million years?
If anyone else wants to, they can. I just was saying I can't.
I can't even remember.
But what's the date, Deb?
January eleventh.
It's the last time you went.
Why wouldn't you? Because you can do it.
I'll go. I, I haven't been with Ty, and especially not with Tyler, for months.
So, would you like to attend, Megan?
I would like to attend. Is that okay, girl?
Oh, yeah. I've been there the last twelve times, so I'm happy.
Okay, so that will be Megan and Tyler, and then myself.
Hopefully I won't go back to the gym.
Okay. Now, a motion to adjourn, right?
All right.
I so move.
And I have signatures, a sheet that I have to have everyone signature on, so.
So you're not off the hook yet?
Not off the hook yet.
January eleventh.
All in favor of adjourning?
Yay!
At ten-thirty-four. Aye.